Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening and our staff to the Placerville City Council meeting of January 8th. And would you all please join me and rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If I could ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Acuna.
President.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item three this evening, presentations to the public and announcements by the City Council, brief comments from the City Council. I'll begin to my left, Mr. Saragosa. Did you have any announcements or comments this evening?
I do not.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I had the occasion on our -- I'm on the board for the Placerville Downtown Association. Well, I'm just going off of the board. And we had a presentation from Edwild, Elrod County Wine Re-Association, and they are interested in partnering with the city of Placerville Downtown Association in terms of looking at creating a gateway into the city. And while nothing's in concrete, there's a lot of conversation going on right now. I just wanted to start that conversation, at least put that information out here. We've had -- the city has had correspondence with them previously, but it's coming time to really look at doing something. And I know the downtown merchants are excited at the idea of partnering with the Wine Re- Association, and I think that they're going to be looking for some participation from the city as well. And what that looks like is completely unknown at this point, but I do know that it has the enthusiasm, and I personally have that as well. So that's all my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Dennis. Councilmember Taylor, did you have any comments this evening?
No comment.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Borelli.
Just one. I would just want to say Happy New Year to everybody.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Yes, Happy New Year. It's nice to start the first meeting of the year off with a nice audience. We appreciate all your attendance this evening. For myself, I would just like to recognize the 80th anniversary of the Placerville Seroptimists, Seroptimists of Placerville, 1939 to 2019. They held, celebrated their 80th anniversary yesterday at Tuckery House. They had a very nice reception. And the Placerville Seroptimist Club just does a tremendous amount of work in the community for women of all ages, and they have a number of scholarships. They, of course, are always looking for new members. I think you can find them online, siplacerville.org would be the place to look. And just a very dedicated group of women who combine their efforts and energies to protect and nurture a whole variety of issues with young women and careers and women advanced in life with life challenges. So thanking them for being a very longstanding club here in Placerville, and we wish them many, many more years of success. All right, so with that, we'll move on to item 3.2, which is something that I asked to have on the agenda for this evening, and it is a Caltrans update, Highway 50 at Mosquito Road. And I guess I would start out by saying that this project is coming back. Those of you that may not remember, but Caltrans absolutely needs to perform a bridge deck replacement on Highway 50 at Mosquito Road. Last September, Caltrans proposed reducing Highway 50 to one lane in each direction for 12 days and 12 nights sometime in mid-October. When the city and other local agencies discovered what the ultimate plan was, we had an urgent meeting with Caltrans that was represented -- the community was represented by county fire, Calfire, city agencies, county organizations, and convinced Caltrans that due to the time of year and the lack of public notification, that the project absolutely could not go forward. And they did agree to shut the project down, winterize it, put the ramps back in service, and with the understanding that they would be back with this project in spring of 2019. On last year's proposal, during our meeting with Caltrans, their traffic modeling experts had anticipated that it would take one hour to travel through Placerville during this one lane, one lane in each direction closure. So if you can think how you would get through Placerville and spend one hour doing it, you can see the massive impact that this project is, was going to have, and will have. So moving towards spring 2019, right now Woodrow DeLorean and Cleve Morris are working with Caltrans project staff that's been identified for the project for this year. They are beginning to obtain the details, the project managers and their project information. Our goal is to ensure a multi-regional traffic mitigation plan is prepared for this project. We need to start detouring folks away from Highway 50 during this project, as far away as places like Davis and Stockton. Highway 50 is not going to be a viable option for the through traffic. Caltrans and Eldorado County Transportation Commission will engage dozens of agencies and community business members in an attempt to mitigate impacts and ensure the public is fully aware. In an effort to keep Placerville informed, I hope to include an update at every council meeting, if appropriate, on this project. So given that we only meet twice a month, mid-spring is going to get here awfully quick, and I know that we're all going to have to work together so that we get through this project together. So I don't think that we can do too much to help Caltrans get their message out there. So it's just an update, and there'll be more details coming forward as they become available from Caltrans. So thank you for that. Moving on to item four, closed session report. Mr. Driscoll, good evening, sir. Is there anything to report?
Good evening, Vice Mayor. No, there is not. The council did not take reportable action tonight.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item five, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to move for adoption?
I'll move for adoption.
Can I comment? I would like to move item 12.6 to the before the candidates, before 12.1. It's a -- I think the gentleman probably doesn't want to sit through the whole process here, one person, on the construction agreement for Garland DBS Incorporated.
Say again, 12.
12.6, and move it before 12.1.
Just move it up?
Yep.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with a noted change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. All right, now the fun part of the evening begins, and that is recognition and our show of appreciation for our recently retired county, Eldorado County Fire District Chief Michael Hardy. Michael, are you in the audience? I think you are. Could we have you come up to the podium, please? It's nice to see -- I see you're out of uniform already.
I'm retired.
Ditched that look fast. Good for you. Michael, it's an honor to recognize you and your dedication to the county fire district for the last number of years. I believe you were elected chief in 2013?
Yes, sir.
Well, I have a proclamation here that I am going to give to you, a certificate of appreciation, actually, but I'd like to just say a few words about my observations of your years as being the leader of Eldorado County Fire District. Chief Hardy's experience, training, and leadership helped transform Eldorado County Fire into a well-respected, financially-stable fire protection district. When he came aboard, they were real financial troubles, and as he left, they had the ability to not only sustain their operations, but actually go out and replace most of all of their equipment. And in a very unique and unusual method, they actually paid cash, which is a trick we've never managed to figure out. So that is just an excellent example of the leadership that you represented to this district. Chief's commitment to training and advanced firefighting methods has ensured our community is protected by a motivated professional group of fire personnel. Chief Hardy recognizes the need for an aggressive initial attack in a home, business, or a wildland emergency. It's this leadership that has proven to be so effective at reducing injuries, property losses, and keeping wildland fires small. He has also served outside the district on his Firefighters Association Honor Guard, and I know he has spent numerous times on statewide incident management teams, working up and down the state of California, not only serving all of the citizens, but also bringing back all the benefits that come from working in that team. And I think it's an understanding that it takes a certain specialty as a chief to ensure that you have firefighters that know when to be aggressive, when they need to make a stop, when they need to be safe, and that just translates into making this community a much, much safer place for all of us. So I would thank you very, very much for all your years of service, and I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation. Michael, thank you very much.
You know, it's kind of weird, after 37 years in the fire service, hearing accolades, because really, that's not why I nor most firefighters get into the business. So it feels a little uncomfortable to be standing here to hear those words. But I can tell you that it's been a privilege to do what I have done, to be involved in a profession that I've had for the last 37 years. Here in Eldorado County, 27 of them, my family moved from Southern California in 1991. Don't judge me.[786.11][786.11](laughter) And when we moved here, this community, we moved into the city of Placerville, and I was hired as a firefighter paramedic, and the community and the agency accepted us, made us feel at home, and this did become our home. And it has been a very gratifying 27 years since we did move up here. As you mentioned, promoting to the rank of fire chief in 2013 was one of the greatest professional privileges of my entire life. I never took it for granted. I appreciated the -- all of the relationships that we had, including with the city of Placerville. Understood, you know, during consolidations, the city did lose a little bit of their identity when we consolidated. However, I always appreciated and felt that the city was a cornerstone of our fire district. So thank you for that. You have some fine people working here. I'm going to miss the staff meetings with the city manager, Cleve Morris, and your excellent leadership that you have within the city. But I can assure you that my departure does not mean that there is any lack of leadership within our own fire district. Chief Dutch is in the audience right now. He is the acting fire chief, and several of my board members, Ken Harper, Chris Schwabrick is here. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention them that were here today. There's going to be no lack of commitment or service to the city of Placerville. Pardon me. Or the rest of our fire district. But again, thank you for this. I would also be remiss that you don't get through 37 years in the fire service without support, and my biggest supporter has been my wife, who is behind me here, Sharon, my three daughters, one of them is here, Madison, and now I have six grandkids. And it's been a privilege, and I've felt the support from them as well. So with that, I thank you very much for this honor, and thank you.
Well, Chief, don't go away.[924.01][924.01](applause)
I thought I was going to get out of here unscathed.
No, 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 just because there's no uniform. For those that don't know, one of the many roles of the fire chief is to attend our staff meetings, and Chief Hardy has been through a number of those. He's actually dispatched himself to fires during the middle of our staff meetings over his history. So he intimately is aware of the issues that face us, Placerville. So before I forget, I don't want to overlook the fact that Supervisor Veerkamp unfortunately had a conflict this evening. He needed to attend Eldorado Unified High School District Board meeting this evening, but he asked me to extend his heartfelt thanks to you for your years of dedicated service to the city and the county. And I'd also like to have an opportunity to invite my department heads that have worked with you, if they would like to say a few words. Chief?
I thought what was in the staff meeting stayed in staff meetings.[981.32][981.32](laughter)
Did you guys -- any comments?
I'll start.
Mr. Morris?
It does until you retire. How's that? No, I would like to thank, Michael, we've had a good working relationship for the last, what, since 2013, since he's been chief and I've been here, and he's always been very willing to work with us and try to find solutions, and been very cooperative. I look over to our police chief, they have an ongoing battle about a fire truck, but we won't get into that tonight.[1012.13][1012.13](laughter)
It's still at Station 26, isn't it? Okay. My last departing thing before I retire.
Yeah, and you still hold the key to keep it locked up, right?[1022.13][1022.13](laughter) Yeah, yeah. But, Michael, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with you and a good relationship, and you've been very helpful to the city, and we appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head comments?
I'll just say a couple words. Mike, I just want to say just what a pleasure it has been working with you, and I took note of one comment you make and you made, and that's that you felt the city was kind of a cornerstone during the reorganization, everything that happened, the consolidation of the fire districts. And I just want to state that you were always an extension of city staff. I mean, it felt like you had the city was, you had the city's best interest, and you were so cooperative in trying to work out all the different issues that we had. And probably what I'd miss the most is that, you know, I'm probably the oldest person there at these management meetings, until I found out that you were a year older than I was. So now I'm back in that seat again.
You need to retire.[1086.58][1086.58](laughter)
Easy, Chief.
Mike, I'm going to miss you, and I wish you the very best in your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you, Pierre.
Thank you, Pierre. Mike, don't go down, sit down just yet. There are a few folks in the audience that would like to come forward and say a few words, so at this point, I will invite members of the public. They would like to recognize you for your years of service. If you could just introduce yourselves for the benefit of our audience, we'd appreciate it.
Certainly. I am Jeannie Harper, and this is my husband, Ken Harper. And just as the chief said, we moved up 16 years ago from Southern California as well, not knowing what we were going to find in our very tiny, small rural community. What we found was exactly what we all know. It takes a community, it takes the village to do anything, especially in a small, remote community. Having Chief Hardy with us for the past several years has just put the frosting on the cake for that. And so, Chief, we're here to bring you greetings from Pollock Pines for all that you've done. And what this says is, Chief Michael Hardy, your dedication and commitment to the community of Pollock Pines demonstrates the strength of effective community leadership. Thank you for your valued service. We so appreciate you.[1178.01][1178.01](applause)
Thank you very much, Harper. We appreciate you.
Jeannie failed to mention that Ken Harper is one of the Eldorado County Fire Board members, representing Pollock Pines and Camino.
Thank you.
Am I done?
No.[1202.49][1202.49](laughter) Is there anyone else? I believe the acting chief is in the audience. I'm sure that would be a good opportunity if you impart some words to the --
Good evening. My name is Paul Dutch, and I have the opportunity and privilege of serving as the acting fire chief with the Eldorado County Fire Protection District. I've had also the opportunity and privilege to serve alongside Chief Hardy since 2012, when he stepped in as the interim fire chief. And I just want to expand on some of the things that you mentioned about him. One of the things that he's very good at is remaining humble on what he actually did. During his tenure, he closed a $1.4 million structural deficit, he paid off $2.5 million worth of municipal debt obligations, and he purchased a fleet of apparatus for our district outright, which is, as you mentioned previously, not many agencies are able to do that. So when we experienced our financial challenges, rather than passing blame, he stepped up and accepted responsibility and provided the leadership that we needed. So I know that I'm grateful. I'm hopeful that the public is grateful as well for what he did for our district, because when agencies are experiencing financial challenges, it's the taxpayers that ultimately pay for that. So we're very thankful for what he did, and I know that he has grandchildren here in the audience, and I'm hopeful that he not only gets to enjoy them, but he gets to enjoy great-grandchildren as well. So we're very thankful for what you did, Chief Hardy. Thank you.[1282.71][1282.71](applause)
If I may, those were very kind words from Chief Dutch. However, I did have a lot of help with a very understanding board, new board at that time, and a labor force, a local, that was willing to take concessions and understood where we were, and that we either succeeded together or we failed together. So there was a lot of help during that last, those couple of years when I took over as fire chief. But thank you for those words, Chief Dutch.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to comment?[1322.15][1322.15](laughter)
Good evening, Placerville City Council. It's a privilege to be with you today, and you're all looking mighty good up there. I can't let this opportunity pass without commending Chief Hardy for his service to our community. As we all know, fire safety is so critically important, and I know it's on your agenda tonight, and I know it's been on the minds of our community for years, but no time more than this past year. And so we thank you for securing our community, making us safe, for your effective leadership in perilous times. And your service has been absolutely critical to our community. And I had the privilege of being witness to the start of your chieftom, if you will, as your new board was wrestling with having to deal with a very difficult financial situation, and the safety of our community was at stake. And I have to commend Dennis, your participation on the Eldorado County Fire Board, as well as the rest of your board, as you were tasked with finding a chief that would, you know, lead you to a safe community. And you were the right choice. You were absolutely the right choice. Your expertise in financial matters, as well as your servant leadership, made for a dynamic combination. And I've had the privilege of getting to know you personally over the last couple of years, and that's been a privilege. And what our community might not know is that Chief Hardy had lots of other options these last couple of years, as agencies tried to woo him away with promises of shinier fire trucks and bigger budgets. And yet I know that you turned them down, because your servant leadership and your caring and compassion for this community called you home, because you knew how vitally our community needed you. And that's the mark of a true leader, and I have utmost respect for that. So thank you. We wish you well. You deserve it. And thank you for loving and caring for our community.[1451.25][1451.25](applause)
Any council member comments?
Careful, Dennis.
Oh, we have one, excuse me, one additional member of the public would like to speak. Good evening.
Thank you, Council. My name's Chris Schwabrick, and I am newly elected to the board, and previously sat on the board of directors for Eldorado County Fire District when we hired Chief Hardy. And I will tell you that we had a little bit of a running joke, because I initially told Chief Hardy, I said, "I don't know if you're the guy for the job." And I was serious, but he proved me wrong. Quite honestly, he stepped up in a time when stepping up meant that you were going to tackle the weight of a multimillion-dollar deficit in a budget, had a hard time keeping people, had old equipment, and a struggling department. And that was a time when departments were failing all across the country. And I'll tell you that this fire district is a model, an absolute model for recovery. Dennis Thomas can also attest to that, because he sat right alongside me. And so, quite honestly, Chief Hardy was very humble in surrounding himself with people that would assist him along the way. He led the department well, and I can say that I'm also a fire captain. I work down in Sacramento, and we don't have a very good relationship between much of the city council, some of the membership. You know, there's definitely tensions. We never, ever had that problem up here. Between the union leadership, the board of directors, and between the fire chief and all the executive staff, we always had a very, very good relationship, because we had the same common goal. And Chief Hardy led that right along the way. Definitely was a very, very big success, and so I'd like to congratulate Chief Hardy and just say that from sitting through that time of coming back from the grave with the fire district, it was, it's very successful, and we should all be very proud that Eldorado County Fire stands here more than whole today. So, thanks, Chief.[1578.01][1578.01](applause)
Is there any other members of the public that wish to comment on Chief Hardy's retirement? Seeing no one, then allow me to close by, on behalf of all the citizens.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought I'd already asked for council member comments. There's a former board member here that would like to address -- I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Thomas.
That's all right.
Thank you.
I had the honor of serving with Chief Hardy. Not, I don't know, serving. We were, I was his board of directors. I'd been his chairman for, I think, five or six years for Eldorado County Fire, and I did that right up to the point where I took over here in city council. And I have to tell you, we drank a few shots of whiskey. We had some challenging -- was I not supposed to say that?
Hey, I'm retired. You can say whatever you want.
It wasn't on duty, but we went through some amazingly challenging times. And his number one concern was how do we keep fire stations open? And how do we keep our firefighters employed? And how do we get through this? And he did that by surrounding himself with amazing people. He was a calming force, and I can't tell you how much, I'm not sure what the right word is, contention there was when I came on the board at county fire back in 2012. And when Chief Hardy took over, it was his calming voice, his ability to reach across the lines, to meet people head-on, have tough conversations, bring people to the table, the union, and everybody involved in the negotiations, to not only save the fire district from essentially a bankruptcy, a potential bankruptcy, but to turn it around. And it was his leadership that brought these people together. He brought together amazing people, between, you know, Chief Dutch over there, and we threw some attrition, we cut our staff more than in half, and he made it go. He did not take a salary increase from assistant chief for two years, because he wanted to demonstrate his commitment to the staff, that he was there with them through what was challenging times. It was an honor, it was an honor to be there through that with you, and I appreciate your service for our community. People don't think about the fire trucks and the ambulances unless they really need them. They don't think about the fire board. There weren't people in our audience trying to make their point, make their case very often, like we have here. But you want to know that the fire trucks and the ambulance is going to show up when you ring that, and that was his number one concern. And you did that. And we fought to keep fire stations open, and we fought to provide amazing service, and I think we've done that. So thank you, Chief, for the opportunity to be with you on that.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas.[1775.13][1775.13](applause) Mr. Acuna?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hardy. Chief, it is my honor and privilege to thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Placerville, the citizens of Eldorado County, for all your years of service, your dedication, your leadership, your foresight in -- your foresight in bringing and keeping Eldorado County on a high caliber of fire safety. And we wish you many, many years of happy retirement and you're anxious to get back there to play with those grandkids. So thank you very much from the citizens of Placerville. Everyone, please, let's give the chief around a spot.
Thank you again.
And I always told myself I was going to grow a beard like Dennis's when I retired, so maybe one day I can.
All right. Thank you all very much for your comments and appreciate everyone coming this evening. And Chief Dutch, I'll be getting your card soon. Big fire boots to fill. All right. This is an exciting time and city council time. Moving on to item 6.2, a motion for the city council to adjourn the meeting senedai and appoint the city manager as a temporary chairperson. Each year, this is Cleve's chance to have a coup and take over the city. So I think I will symbolically pass the gap. No, Cleve doesn't, he doesn't, he does not need the gavel passed to him. So at this point, I turn the meeting over to City Manager Morris. Good luck, Cleve.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Akuna. So as outlined in the agenda at this time, I will re-adjourn the meeting and then call for nominations from the floor for the position of mayor.
I'd like to make a nomination of our great Vice Mayor, Councilman Akuna, as mayor.
Okay. And is there a second to that?
I second that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and second to nominate Vice Mayor Akuna as mayor for the coming year. All in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, if any? Thank you. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor Akuna.
Thank you. I'll take the gavel back. Thank you, Cleve. How was it? How'd it go? Okay, boy. All right. Well, let's see if we can make the rest of this happen that same way. Thank you very much. I'm honored to, always have been honored to serve the citizens of Placerville. I was honored to serve as Wendy Thomas's last vice mayor and that's a tremendous, a tremendous honor to work with her and share her passion for the city and all of its citizens. So with that, I will move on to item 6.3, the mayor's call for nominations for vice mayor. I will now ask for nominations for a vice mayor for the year 2019.
I'd like to nominate Michael Saragosa for vice mayor.
Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? All right. Michael Saragosa has been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Saragosa. You are Vice Mayor for 2019.
Thank you. I look forward to serving as Vice Mayor with you, mayor.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That went very smoothly. Moving on to item seven, public comment. This is always the fun part of the meeting. Starting out with 7.1, written communication. Mr. Morris, there's been a number of items that have appeared up here on the dais.
Yes, you do have some. All of those are related to item 11.1 on your agenda tonight, so you can consider those in conjunction with that item.
All right. Thank you. So again, there are a number of items that we have received for 11.1 and we will be reviewing them when we get there. Oral communication. This is the citizens' opportunity to address the council on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. However, we would ask that you restrict your comments to items that are relative to council business and of course conduct yourself in an appropriate manner. If you would like to state your name as a courtesy to the audience, we would certainly appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm David Zalinski, self-appointed Chair of the Placerville Fire Safe Council. And hopefully this will become official. I think it's Wednesday, January 16th at 9:30 in the morning. It's in the forestry building on 40, so I'm a little bit worried about the government shutdown, but hopefully they'll find a way for us to meet. So at that time, we should be official and there'll be a Placerville Fire Safe Council. There's about 10 people already on it, wide variety of expertises. My colleague Ben Solveski, I do have a son Ben Zalinski, but that's not the one. We'll address you, hopefully, Ben, later on in the meeting. So we are here to provide support and hopefully get some grant money and some expertise in helping us be fire safe. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And that meeting is on the 16th of January?
Yeah, it's January 16th, 9:30 in the morning. It's in the forestry building downstairs. There's a large meeting room down there. I hope they let us in. I don't know what's going to happen with the government shutdown. Maybe they'll find another place. Do you know anything about it?
And the forestry building is on?
I think it's 140 Road. It's right near where Thompson's is and In-N-Out Burger, all those great places. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your efforts. We're looking forward to seeing that move forward. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on a non-agendized item?
Susan Rodman, resident of Placerville. My non-agendized item is the bollards at the corner of Main Street and Sacramento Street. There were three of them originally and it seems like the center one must be too close to the curb because it's been missing a number of times. It gets taken out. I think probably the two that are remaining would be sufficient and maybe we could just eliminate the third one as being in the path of too many trucks.
Thank you, too. Any other member of the public? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Lars Knudsen from Pollock Pines. I'm a retired firefighter as of 2010 and I moved to Pollock Pines from the Valley. And in 2014, when I moved to Pollock Pines, four months later, I had the dubious honor of picking up the guy that started the King Fire. I was led by the spirit of God to pick him up. 18 months later, he pleaded guilty. I was just, I addressed the Board of Supervisors about three or four weeks ago of this, we have, as of last month, seven months until we get back into the fire season. So now we have about six months and my question to the Board of Supervisors was what was God of Rado County going to do for this next fire season? And what I would encourage is that we don't wait for disasters to come to pray. We start praying, preparing now. And one thing that I'm really impressed with this county is that there's a lot of great things happening and I'm real excited and there was no accident that I came tonight and see the chief being appreciated of his service. The firefighters, the police force, CHP, Bureau Lands Management, people that work in the county have the best eyes to see how to bring fire breaks and get rid of a lot of the old stuff in our county. And I know there's a very strong move on that and that's a real positive thing. And the council was talking about at the meeting there that there was a grant of about $1 million or no, it was $2 million. And I believe in big, like $100 million for the state and maybe we could be the distributors to get the money out to show that this city, that this county can be a jewel to the state. And most importantly, I believe we need to rededicate the lands back to the Lord Jesus. We pray. We need divine direction and I ask Him to bless you with His peace and His love and His hope and His light. And what I found is that I cannot change a community unless I'm changed. And I can't change a neighborhood unless my house is changed and then I can start working on my neighbors. And that's what I've been doing. I have been literally working with the neighbors, cleaning up the properties. And I'm believing that after you change your neighborhoods, then your communities can change and then when your communities change, you can actually help affect the state. And when the state is changed, then you can affect and change this nation. So God bless you and thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate you being here this evening. Is there any other member of the public wishes to address the council? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and move on to item eight, which is the consent calendar. Consent calendar is considered under one motion. Is there any item on the consent calendar that a council member wishes to remove or discuss? Is there any item on the consent calendar that a member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing no one approaching the podium. Good night. Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Could the clerk call a roll, please?
Mayor Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10. We don't have any ordinances this evening. Moving on to item 11.1, a public hearing. And let's see here now. The action before the council is to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 10 zoning ordinance, adding sections to include a cannabis business overlay zone to Chapter 5 of the general regulations and to allow and regulate the establishment of commercial cannabis business activities. The overlay zone map is in question this evening. Now, is there any comment from council members?
I'm going to need to recuse myself on this due to conflict of interest.
And I am going to have to join Councilman Thomas and recuse myself. And I think we should tell why. We both own businesses and have rentals and there's possibility that we could rent to someone in this, so we're going to recuse ourselves.
Thank you very much. We will wait while you depart the room. All right. I'm sure that the clerk will make a note that, for the record, that Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember Borelli have accused themselves due to a conflict, that being property ownership in the overlay zone map area. So with that, we will continue on with 11.1. Cleve, do you have the staff report? Excuse me. Mr. Revas, could we have your staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this proposed ordinance is to allow for the implementation of the city's recently adopted cannabis business regulation ordinance and then to further regulate the location of such business activities within specific commercial zones within the city limits. Back in October of 2018, the council adopted ordinance 1693 that repealed the previous Title V business regulations, but then added Chapter 5, Chapter 28, regulating business activities. So the reference codes that previously prohibited the cultivation, distribution, dispensing of medical marijuana in the city and also prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries from located in the city are now permitted under those regulations. The adoption of Title V, Chapter 28, will require, basically, they would, that the person would have a valid commercial cannabis business permit and a business license from the city and a valid state of California seller's permit. Subsequently, the city council convened what we would call a cannabis regulating committee and that committee had the task of preparing a draft cannabis business overlay zone map. And that original map was dated back in October of 2018. So with staff assistance, what staff did was look at various, what we would call sensitive uses and behind you, I have a series of maps, so I'll start with the map that would be, there, I've got my pointer on it. You see a lot of yellow on there. So what we did is we identified various sensitive units, uses. So that would include public and private schools, parks, churches, daycare facilities, youth centers and the like. And then any parcel that was located within 250 feet of a sensitive use, we then identified that on the map. So the cannabis regulating committee had the ability of looking at those and then deciding under what zones and what areas of the city we would then prefer to have cannabis businesses. And so the next set of maps, there are two sets. One, we would call Placerville West. You can see that's the Placerville Drive corridor and the bottom one, the bottom map there has Main Street and Broadway. The cannabis committee basically said that it did not want to see any cannabis activity locating east of Schnell School Road, so that was the cutoff. And then the committee said that it didn't want to see any cannabis activity within the historic downtown Main Street. So essentially what you see, then staff created these maps for a final review by the subcommittee that only affected commercial and highly commercial lands. There were essentially parcels that would front along Placerville Drive, Green Valley Road, Pro's Road, Cold Springs Road, Middletown, Upper Main Street, east of Cedar Ravine and Broadway, west of Schnell School Road. That map was then forwarded on to the Planning Commission on December 4th. The Planning Commission considered both the cannabis business overlay zone text amendment that accompanies and actually creates the cannabis business overlay zone and then the drafts maps. Staff also provided some additional recommendations to be considered by the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission approved both the text as presented by staff and the maps as modified and recommended by staff. And so you can see on those two maps, the properties that have the hash marks, those are the particular parcels where staff recommended that the Planning Commission forward the recommendation to the council to remove those particular parcels. And the reason being, they didn't exactly front and they weren't clearly visible on those Main Street corridors. So they were hidden or they would have an easement to get to them. And so it was clear direction from the committee that we would only want to be looking at those parcels that are clearly visible and have frontage on those roads that I previously mentioned. And the Planning Commission agreed and then recommended deleting those from the proposed map that is now before you. We did add one parcel on there and that was inadvertently left out and the commission went ahead and added that as well. And that's on the, that would be at the very east end of Placerville Drive where the Camino Power Tools currently locates A1 Hardware, that little commercial strip. It was inadvertently showed as multifamily and that's why it was left off, so we went ahead and put that on there. So that was the map that went to the Planning Commission. It was approved in whole. I just want to point out that there was a lot of discussion before the Planning Commission and I think that discussion carried the gamut. You had some planning commissioners that really were advocating more of a free market and so they felt that this was too restrictive, that it should have been applied to all commercial properties that could actually have a cannabis business within it. And then you also had the other side. You had some planning commissioners that were advocating maybe something more restrictive, that we should have considered other considerations such as school bus stops or certain areas where children walk to school and that sort of thing. So we did not go through that exercise. The vote was to forward a recommendation as presented to you today, but I wanted to let you know that there was a lot of discussion on where and how and under what circumstances should the cannabis overlay be applied. I do also want to point out that staff received a telephone call from state of California in regards to the DMV. They felt like the DMV should not be included, so we did delete that as well. And I could see that, maybe, you know, like drinking and driving, maybe smoking and driving is something that they didn't want to feel that they were party to. So we're recommending that be deleted. We also looked at other parcels that didn't seem adequate to have the overlay such as the Caltrans yard, the PG&E substation on Blair's Lane. We removed those. We also recommended removing a city parcel that's next to the PD. So that's about the gamut of that. I do want to point out that was brought to my attention unfortunately just today that we neglected to identify the New Morning Youth Center or the shelter that's off of New Morning Court off of Ray Lawyer. So if we were to, and I think I provided you a small map of the location of that use. It's a little triangular parcel off of Ray- it's a little triangular, triangle parcel off of Ray Lawyer Drive located on New Morning. So I just want to point out to the, to the city council, the staff is recommending that you leave the overlay as is. Staff will create and, and overlay or show where those parcels in the future when people come in with, with an application, if it happens to be within 250 feet of that particular use. I want to point out that as the crow flies, it's 250 feet, but effectively it's, it's very geographically distant from that use. If you were to walk or drive, it's greater than 250 feet and so through a variance application process then the city can still consider if, if there was an application located on Placerville Drive. And that's sort of along the area of where, say, the Big Five and, and that area is. So I wanted to point that out to you. What else can I point out to you? One of the comments that staff received post creation of the staff report is from Max Del Rio and Max Del Rio is supporting inclusion of property located at 1560 Broadway. And then we also have a letter that we received today that you also have a copy of from a Mr. Shima, he is the owner of 1560 Broadway. Just to talk a little bit about that particular parcel, it is located well east of Schnell School Road which was the cutoff from the committee. But it's not to say that the council can consider doing something else, but that's why those properties, none of those properties in that area were considered for that reason. So anyways, you have those comments on there. So another set of maps to make you just aware of, the reason why we have those large maps up on the top, again, that was just to help the council, if you were interested in a particular parcel, that aerial allows you to better and more clearly identify the uses of where the property is. And there's the associated one on the, on the, on the east. And in the last two maps, the subcommittee was very interested in, in having these parcels located on the north side of Main Street where like Turner is, Turner Street, this large area in here, that's Sierra School and Sierra School casts then that 250 setback. Again, I think from staff's perspective and from the committee's perspective, that's geographically has a greater distance than, say, as a crow flies. So although it's within 250 feet, the committee felt that it wanted to give those properties on the north side the ability to come in and apply for a variance if somebody were to propose a cannabis business activity in any of those parcels that are shown. And so the reason why we have two maps is we show one that's the entire parcel ownership and then the one on the bottom is, is where we have, we've reduced the parcel ownership, they're really showing where the building and the playground, school areas is. So it, it reduced it enough too, if we looked at it from that perspective, that clearly I think the city could make the findings that it meets the intent of a 250-foot setback. So if anybody has any other questions on those, I can answer that later on, but that's the reason for those two exhibits, to show why the subcommittee went ahead and wanted to keep those parcels located on the north side even though it would have been within the 250-foot setback, that when you really took out a lot of the properties that aren't in actual school or playground use, that it's a, it's a lesser setback. So with that, staff is recommending that you waive the first reading of the ordinance and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. That concludes staff's report, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Pierre. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I went over a bunch of questions with Cleve the other day, but should we listen to the, I know there's a lot of people from the public, do we want to have them comment?
Oh, we will.
Okay.
Right now, I just want to give the council an opportunity for anything that staff has presented so far.
So there was a lot of concern about having Prose Road part of the overlay from community members and I was just wondering is, would a liquor store be able to operate there by right in that zone?
Yes, a liquor store or other establishments that would sell liquor, alcohol, restaurants, places of entertainment are allowed by right in both the highway commercial and the commercial zone districts.
Okay, and then in terms of signage, there is concern about children seeing, you know, signs for the cannabis businesses. In the ordinance, is signage, what are the rules about signage for the businesses?
Okay, the signage will be controlled, as far as the, the placement and the amount of signage, that'll be controlled by the general, you know, by our zoning code. So whether you're a cannabis dispensary or use, whether you're in a retail store, the signage regulations apply the same. But, and I would refer to Mr. Morris to describe, there are additional requirements in the application process as far as identification of the cannabis product, that they could have the name of their business, but it's my understanding that in that application, which I think will come before you in a later item as far as regulating the presentation of, of that cannabis establishment.
Michael, did you have any questions for staff at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Cleve, if you could, before we open the public hearing on this, this is a good one, briefly describe where we are on this. The thing to remember, I think most importantly, is the number of licenses that are actually being considered and the amount of work that has already been done with the ordinance that puts a tremendous number of requirements on an applicant.
Right.
So, just so people would be, how that relates to where we are with the overlay map.
Okay. So the, the ordinance was adopted and is in effect, however, these are some other things that we have to process in order to make it so that we can process applications and move forward. Your next item on your agenda is that application process, that's not proposed for adoption tonight, but just for review and then it'll be adopted at your next meeting that adopts your application fees for those who want to apply for a license. As Councilmember Taylor was just mentioning, talking about the signings, that is very much restricted in the ordinance, talks about the signs cannot be illuminated, they have to be identified what they, what the business is, but there are no elimination and et cetera, different things that restrict what can be done in terms of signage in addition to what Mr. Rivas's department would look at in terms of amount of signage that those would have to have. So where we're at right now is we are moving forward with adopting this. This requires a first reading tonight, a second reading at your next meeting and then it will take effect 30 days from that, which would be 30 days from the 22nd of January or the February 22nd is when that would take effect. The current, what we're looking at in the application procedures is that we would begin taking applications the beginning of April and those would close April 1st. Now that's subject to change right now because you have not looked at that. And then we would continue that review process and it's a fairly extensive process as you can see in the application to go through. So we're, we're still a ways away from where we would actually have any business licenses approved, but we are continuing with that process, so.
Cleve, how many permits, or excuse me, I should use the word licenses, was, would be allowed?
Yeah, the council adopted by resolution at a previous meeting that there would be allowed three retail businesses and three testing facilities at that time, so. And that could be changed in the future by the council, but that's what they have adopted at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so the-
I do have a question after all, maybe a couple. Cleve, did we have any other, I know we got a letter from the school district, was there any further conversations with them in regards to any of their concerns or is it just the letter that they submitted?
I, I met with the superintendent and discussed his concerns. Their concern was to try and ask if there was a way to include things such as bus stops et cetera and have the 250 feet from those also. Unfortunately, our ordinance has already adopted that says that's what it will be. However, in the application process, we're reviewing that and we believe that that can be considered as part of the point system as we look forward at the application process and review applications, so.
Would that, would that restrict a large amount of, I mean, if you went to a bus stop, how constrictive would that be to the overlay? Because I would assume that would be quite a bit of area.
Yeah, I'm assuming that it would and that's, that's the problem that we ran into when we started looking at this, is because we are a long and linear community, it doesn't take much to be within those and that's why we actually, as you know, brought the number, the, the distance down to 250 from what the state requirement is. For that reason, if we kept at the 600, we would probably not have hardly any parcels that would qualify and that was the reason for that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Cleve, appreciate that. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and invite any member of the public to come forward and speak to the council regarding item 11.1. If I could ask for everyone to state their name as, as a courtesy for the benefit of the public. Good evening, Chair.
Good evening. My name is John List, I live here in Placerville. The planning commission six months ago sent to you and you approved a extreme low-income housing overlay for the property at the corner of Middletown Road and Cold Springs. It would be possible that 185 housing units could be built for extreme low income and now we're proposing to sell marijuana, cannabis across the street. This to me sounds like a very poor planning, that we're not looking at what we had done in the past to establish what we're doing now. I think we can do better in the city of Placerville than that. Speaking before the planning commission, a man stated that he'd worked in the, for the cannabis growers of Eldorado County for the past 15 years. That was many years before the state approved medical marijuana. And a commissioner asked him how he felt about the ordinance as it was written. He said he really liked it, kind of like asking a person that has broken the law how he likes the, how the new law suits him. Yet one of the speakers could not identify himself because he was a member of local school board. That's a strange thing about ethics in government. I'm asking you to remove the Prose Road, Cold Springs from your western section overlay. We have three houses on that, on Cold Springs that are dedicated to men trying to get off of addictions, yet we are going to put, and, excuse me, and we also have a house sheltering women and children escaping a violent environment across the street. Seems like a strange combination that we're setting up there. On one side of the street, we could have cannabis stores and the other side of the street, we have kids walking to the junior high and high school right down Cold Springs. They live in houses beyond the mortuary. We have a bus stop that stops at the tool repair. That is a great way to, to protect our kids having that kind of environment right across the street. You really have a choice tonight. You can leave Cold Springs, Prose Road is part of the western overlay and say to the residents and the kids that the revenue from, that's going to be generated is more important than they are. I hope you'll be, be wise in your choices and take that section out of the western zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I should have pointed out that I am going to ask folks to limit their comments to three minutes this evening since we do have a number of folks in the audience. Mr. Lishman, are you ready and operating the clock? All right, very good. So, someone else wish to address the council? For, against, or with the concerns regarding the item before us? Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Rod Miller, Eldorado County Growers Alliance and also representing Metro Commercial Realty. You know, I've worked with a lot of the community, been going throughout Eldorado County, talking about commercial cannabis and one of the, the greatest obstacles that, that we have to, to come up with a policy that works for our community is fear. Making public policy based on fear never works out and with respect to the Prose Road, Cold Springs Road, it is a very large area and actually one of the more commercially isolated areas and better spots for a commercial cannabis business in the overlay. Particularly the Prose Road end of it has no sidewalks, it's over 500 feet away from any residence, it's very isolated and some of the buildings there are, will be some of the best for a larger type micro business cannabis operations. I really, I respect that folks have fear. I mean, particularly people that have been conditioned with cannabis thinking over the last 30, 40 years have a particular perspective, but we've got to make public policy based on real world risks and cannabis businesses present no more risks than a Starbucks. That's the facts. We have folks that have been in the commercial cannabis business for many years, they can relate to exactly what kind of issues they've, they've had and they have had less than many other types of alcohol businesses or Starbucks. And as the mayor mentioned, your ordinance has a myriad of rules that protects the community. So I really request that you look at the, the facts of the situation, look at that area and include it in the, the commercial zone. It's the best area in the, the city to have a commercial cannabis business. The women's shelter is on, as far as I understand, is on Placerville Drive near the movie theater, not really in that area. The, the businesses there are all commercial businesses and so I request that you maintain that area in the, the commercial zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Someone else wish to address the council?
Yes, Lars Knudsen, Pollock Gardens, California. I find it ironic that after this law was passed, I'm going to read you a heading, headline in the news, "Driver Accused of Hitting/ Killing California Officer Suspected of Being Under the Influence of Pot and Marijuana." You do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Someone else wish to address the council?
Good evening, my name is Jesse and I am actually representing the property located on 1560 Broadway. I would like to kindly request that you reconsider our property for its placement on the cannabis overlay map. I have prepared a few points that I would like to address as to why this location would be an ideal fit for the cannabis business in the city of Placerville. Firstly, and most importantly, I would like to point out that this is a very isolated property on Broadway, there are no schools nearby, meaning that not many children are ever in the area. Not only that, but this area, there are also no school, bus drop-off or pickup area. As well as having no schools in the area, there are no apartments or houses nearby either. There are safe running businesses on the both sides of this property and this property would also be able to run safely and without problems. I would also like to address that, the fact that we have reconstructed this property after it was vacant for three years and have spent a lot of time and effort to make the whole property and area safer and completely clean. We have found a very dedicated tenant, Mr. Del Rio and his business partners, not only are they extremely professional and organized, they have been very successful in the previous cannabis business in the other cities. Their success, professionalism and commitment to the safety make us believe that they would do an extremely job. If you approve our placement on the cannabis overlay map, we will provide the city requirements to bring the building to cannabis business compliance. I believe that this, if this business is able to be in this area, it will attract more people to this side of the town and it will bring more businesses to this area since there are many vacant areas in this part of town. Also, the cannabis business has 24-hour security, has 24 hours security that will make sure the area safer than it already is. We are not looking to harm the community in any way, we are just trying to help businesses expand to this side of the town and making sure that area for the business is safe away from the busier area in the Placerville. We hope- We hope that you will be, find these points reasonable and reconsider our property, 1560 Broadway, for its placement on the cannabis overlay map, as it significantly eliminate many of the common concerns surrounding the cannabis business in the city of Placerville. Thank you very much, and for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Judy Parraff. I live in El Dorado Hills and Placerville. I'd like to comment briefly to the prior speaker. My family came and covered wagons from Illinois. They were business people on Broadway. My parents were business people on Broadway. And for the last 40 years, my husband and I, and our daughters, have purchased and developed and run commercial properties on Broadway. It's been my life work. Let me share some research I've done with you. In the research I've done, it's been found that support for legalization does not translate to acceptance in, quote, "my backyard." Andrew Friedman, who runs the Governor's Office of Marijuana Coordination in Colorado, said, "I tell them, don't underestimate the amount of community outreach and process you should go through." Kevin Ballmer, the director of the Colorado Municipal League, has noted that a town can't just look at revenues from marijuana. It must also consider the possibility of additional expenditures. He further added that each town must also ask itself whether the windfall is worth the potential for increased burdens on social services. In Colorado, much of the tax money gained from marijuana sales is spent on administration, regulation, licensing of the industry, and the rest is spent on abuse prevention treatment programs and law enforcement. In 2018, researchers at UC Riverside concluded medical marijuana dispensaries were correlated with a higher rate of property crimes like vandalism and shoplifting. In Sonoma County, some officials are complaining that all of this legal weed business, as they say it, has done nothing for their community but spawned home invasions, violent crimes, and robberies. In 2018, a study from the National Institute on Drug Abuse followed 10,000 participants from ages 18 to 50. Marijuana users were categorized from random to heavy use in about six different categories, in all six categories compared to non-use of the drug. All patterns were associated with lifetime psychiatric problems, a higher prevalence of lifetime drug problems, and more cognitive difficulties, physical illness, and lifetime alcohol problems. Another study I read reported that usage increased hospital rates. As usage increased, hospital rates tripled. All of this aside, I'm sad that apparent economic concerns outweighed the value of our community, and all that so many have done to make it a unique and wonderful place. I thought we wanted Placerville to be special. We are special. We're unique. Why do we sell ourselves short? Why do we do this? I know you've already decided, but gosh, it's a shame. I just really feel that you've let a genie out of the bottle, and for my port, my part, not in my backyard. I will never rent to any of these businesses, and I have been asked over the years, benign businesses, hemp, clothing, various things. I have values. I have standards. We work hard to make our properties a benefit to the community. This will not be in my backyard.
Thank you very much for your comments. Someone else wish to address the council? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marvin Buquema, and I'm the broker for Apple Realty. And I have through a trust, I'm just a trustee for the property. I pass it on to my relatives. And I was approached by some people that possibly use my property because it fell within the overlay area. And I was a little bit leery about everything. How's it going to work out and whatever? And of course, I went over to Pure Life and looked how they were running, and it looked highly well-run, and people that were coming in, there were everything from doctors to lawyers to whoever, and just buying small amounts of marijuana, you know, I mean, a couple grams or something. You're not talking about big party things. Now, maybe there's been some crime over in Diamond Springs I don't know about. I've never seen it. But I do know one thing, is that it seems to help a lot of people, especially with pain. I have guys working construction with me, and I've never tried it for pain, but I think I'm going to try it, because at my age, I'm now starting to get some serious back issues from all the sports and everything else I've done. And I think it could be easily a benefit to this society. I mean, over the past few years, I've had my building broken into and whatever. To have a better security presence here on Placerville Drive, and I know other property owners have had the problems, and I think it's a lot of times, it's the homeless on the hill, kind of behind the, I guess it'd be north of the county office center. They would get up there, and they start at least two fires. I never said they want to get started, and then the city, or somebody, volunteer group went and cleaned up that homeless camp, which I was really happy of, because I've been in and out of hospitals so many times, I'm on the liver transplant list. I can't climb that hill anymore, because I wanted to go up there and check it out. But I think it could easily be a benefit to a lot of people. I don't see it being a bad detriment. I mean, you know, you talk about liquor, I mean, that's probably the number one killer of anything, and certainly it's everywhere, and that's about it, I guess.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm getting over a cold, so excuse me.
Oh, totally understandable.
I live in Pollock Pines. I retired three years ago. My wife is still working. She works for Moore. I'm sure you're familiar with them. Motherload Rehabilitation Enterprises. My wife leaked it to somebody over there that I was a planning commissioner for 14 years in the city of San Ramon before I retired, so they asked me to show up tonight and get clarification on a few things. And if you need to refer me to staff, I can meet with them at a later date. But do they, does Moore qualify, like the school districts, or the schools you mentioned, to the 250-foot setback? Number one. Number two, on the west side of Placerville Drive, their, their facility is down. It's not frontage, it's down, but the strip, the commercial strip mall just north of them, it's also down a little bit, and there, Moore is expanding into that facility. And of course, they don't want a marijuana facility right next to theirs. I'm concerned about across the street, though, because they do have frontage. So if I could get some clarification on that, you can refer me to staff, or you can, if you want to answer it tonight, it would be great.
I appreciate it. Good item, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
I'm sorry. It's Dennis Viers, V-I-E-R-S.
Thank you, Dennis.
And it lives in Slide Park Hills. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We will ask staff some questions later, once the public comment period is closed.
Thank you.
Is there someone else that wishes to address the council on this item?
Sue Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening. So it's, I never really supported city being welcoming to the cannabis situation, so that's my disclosure, but I, I don't feel like you're ready to adopt these maps today. I think it wasn't this board that decided to move forward with this. It was a different board, and there's probably only one member that's here that actually adopted this, or started this ordinance. So I would hope that you have some really consider, I think this is too broad of a paintbrush, and I don't think you're ready to adopt these maps yet. So I hope that you'll step back a little bit. I think there needs to be more work. We've already brought up, I've heard, different sensitive areas that haven't been identified on these maps. New morning is critical. Moore, I think, should be away from that. And, and my concern all along was, in your own ordinance, it says that your minimum distances to be maintained from specific, specified sense of uses as defined in the code. The code says 600 feet in state law, and I'm really surprised that you would go, I, first off, I don't think Placerville should be the guinea pig for some of this, and I don't think we have, we don't have social resources to take care of this. And you are now putting all of the enforcement on your planning department, is the one that enforces these codes, not the police, or the sheriff, or any of those people. This is on your staff. And so I, if this is just being done for the funding, if the funding wasn't there that you think you're going to get into the city, would you do this project? I really would hope that you would think about that, and, and I think I covered most of my concerns, but I think you are putting businesses that may not agree with this. And I guess that's what I did add on here. Maybe you should notify each property owner that has this overlay on their property. The ones that I hear, the most, are hoping that they can make money from that business. But if a business doesn't want to have that in their store, are they going to be open for lawsuits because they didn't want that there? Because that sometimes happens. If you don't, you know, there's the whole, you know, fair, I don't know the slip of my brain, but you know what I'm talking about with the fairness in renting out your buildings. If you deny someone from renting it, is it going to come back on you because you don't want that type of business in your business? And then the other thing, I don't know if you're differentiating on these areas between testing and retail, because retail is one thing, but testing marijuana, I'm not sure what that entails. I'd be more curious of what testing means in, in what is being allowed, and should anybody that might be next to a testing facility be concerned with their business? So I just hope you don't, I spent two years trying to get the council and planning department to approve a rock, a rock wall, because we bounced, you bounced us around so long. And it was two years for a two-foot rock wall. And this is going to change the whole face of Placerville. And you're being told to just, we'll go take care of all these little things later. Don't worry about it. Just go ahead and pass it, and we'll take care of it in, in our office. So I would hope that everything should be ironed out to a T, as you have required the others of us to do on this project. And I, I really wish you'd reconsider even having this ordinance in Placerville, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium. Or?
Ladies first.
Let the lady go first. Very good.
Thank you. And gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. Please pull the microphone down so we can hear you.
Yeah, okay.
There we go. Thank you.
My name is Julia Parish. My brother, John Monroe, and I are the owners of the property located at 55 Placerville Drive, the site of Thompson's Buick GMC dealership. We respectfully request you reconsider, you consider removing properties along Placerville Drive from the cannabis business overlay zone southwest of Seaboo, Seaboo Lane. Along this portion of Placerville Drive, one side of the street has five parcels, including ours. Directly across the street are the fairgrounds, a museum, and the Veterans Memorial Building. The fairgrounds are not included in the cannabis zone, and we propose that the museum and Veterans Memorial Building directly next door to the fairgrounds be removed from the cannabis zone. Other sites that serve the public, like the DMV, have been removed from the cannabis zone, so we believe it is appropriate to also remove the museum and Veterans Memorial Building from the cannabis zone. State regulations require cities consider sensitive use locations such as city parks and schools when zoning for cannabis businesses. We believe the fairgrounds and museum fall into the broader category of public parks. Therefore, we request that you consider removing the museum and Veterans Memorial Building from the cannabis zone, and the five parcels directly across the street from the museum, Veterans Memorial Building, and the fairgrounds. We believe this would greatly benefit the Placerville community and its many visitors. My son, Brandon, would like to say a few words he wrote regarding this request. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Just one moment. Good evening. Can you pull the microphone up so we can be sure to hear you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brandon, and I would like to share some thoughts regarding the cannabis business overlay zone. I recognize that marijuana use has become more accepted in recent years, and laws regarding marijuana have been greatly relaxed, but it's essential that common sense is used in zoning to ensure a marijuana business is not placed in an area which is inappropriate. The area along Placerville Drive southwest of Seaboo Lane should not be included in the cannabis business overlay zone. This area includes our El Dorado County Fairgrounds, El Dorado County History Museum, and our own Veterans Memorial Building. Attractions like these are heavily used by city and county residents alike, as well as from people outside the county, and we have to ask ourselves, what kind of message does this send to people about the priorities and values of our city of Placerville? Subconscious impressions about places are made all the time, and this would certainly give many people a negative impression of our community. I am also deeply concerned about the effect on children specifically. The fairgrounds and museums are common places for families to take their kids, and having family-friendly surroundings for these places is essential, and I don't think a marijuana business is family-friendly. According to the Rand Corporation, it is important that children are shielded from marijuana-related ads and paraphernalia, because studies show that adolescents exposed to such ads are more likely to report marijuana usage in the following year. Since these areas are heavily trafficked by children due to the presence of family-friendly attractions, it only makes sense that a marijuana business not be allowed in this area. There is precedence for such regulation as well, as there are strict rules on how close liquor, tobacco, and yes, marijuana retailers can be to schools and daycare centers, for example. We should be consistent and protect other key areas like our fairgrounds, museum, and the memorial to honor those who have fought and died for this nation. Thank you all for your time and consideration of the points I've addressed today, and I hope we can put the well-being of our citizens, especially of our children, over dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this? Good evening again.
Good evening. Happy New Year. About eight years ago, some members of my family had really extreme arthritis and nerve damage from shingles. So I don't participate, I don't smoke pot myself, but somebody told me the power of these topicals, which don't get you high, but they're for pain relief. So I started supplying it for my, for the family members, and it was real effective. And so it started to get real expensive, because one was in her 80s. She obviously didn't want to go to dispensary, so. So one of my family members figured that they could produce it, and so they started. And so the thing kind of grew on its own. And the next thing you know, it was in like eight, nine dispensaries, until they changed the laws, and then everything came to a standstill, obviously. So when I was listening to you folks, I heard that you want to do three dispensaries, I think that's what you meant by retail, and you want to do a couple of testing services, but everybody forgets about the topicals, because you rub it on, and it doesn't, doesn't get you loaded, and that's, I think that's part of the reason people forget. So, and nobody ever addresses it, because, most people do forget, because it's such a small part of the whole cannabis package. So I just wanted to ask you guys if you'd thought about that, or if anybody had, had it occurred to anybody, and if not, maybe you could consider, because it falls under, with the cannabis control board, it falls under manufacturing, and they have a real specific, set of specifics for that also. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because normally, it kind of goes by the wayside, and nobody thinks about it, so. That's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that information. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Good evening. Could you state your name for the record?
Kelly Chisano. I represent Pure Life Collective in Diamond Springs. I want to take a moment and thank the staff, everybody that has put on time, and the planning commission. This isn't just something that staff came up with this last Christmas break and decided we're going to move on with cannabis. There's been a lot of meetings and a lot of work and hours put into this, and I want to recognize that. It's greatly appreciated. I know, I feel like with the maps, you guys, a lot of the sensitive areas that we do have, and trying to find that and trying to find that balance in a small demographic city, as far as the shape and size, when you start drawing bubbles on it, you lose all your real estate. You have to find something where it's somewhere between all and none. And I think the staff is doing a great job, so I commend you guys on putting a lot of thought and effort into that, as things like bus stops and issues like that has came up on the county level when they speak on that. I know the county is different, but the bus stops move, because now there is now a new student that's at a new age going to the school that lives in this neighborhood. People don't move so much in our cities and our county. They're generally, a new family will come in, and maybe there's a new bus stop, so we can't continually have to keep it reeval. I don't think it's effective to keep reevaluating bus stops, not to say that they're not sensitive, but we have been on Main Street Diamond Springs since 2011. We've had zero break-ins. We've had one attempted break-in. Somebody broke the window, and within two minutes, they were gone. Sheriff was dispatched. We've only had the sheriff dispatched to our location two times since 2011. It's my understanding that most normal businesses that serve alcohol have a much higher rate of dispatch per annual year. Doesn't even matter the number. You guys can do the, the simple math there. In the regards to a testing facility, a testing facility would be a facility, and I don't think that we need three of them, but, or that three would be interested, but it's a facility that essentially runs computers, that analyzes the moisture, the THC, the different cannabinoids that are active. Terpenes are being displayed, analyzed, and stuff, microbiological, so that it can meet state standards, so that it can become regulated for state consumption and be able to be part of the market. If there's, there is a large cannabis industry in the county just outside of Placerville, so that could, that could play into it. And I want to thank you guys again for everything. My doors are open, and I'm happy to help with whatever we can to see this move forward with anybody, members of the council or staff. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Kimberly Cargile. I am on the Board of Directors for Conscious Consulting and Yoga, one of the applicants. I've been studying natural medicine for the last 20 years, and have been an advocate of regulations for medical cannabis at the Capitol and throughout Northern California for the last 10 years. I'm also the Executive Director of a therapeutic alternative that is a model dispensary that's worked very closely to help pass regulations on the state level. We encourage anyone here to come do a tour of our facility, and I'd be happy to help with any type of education regarding the science and the laws of cannabis. We did buy a building in the overlay district, and are going to be working really hard to revive that building that has seen better years and put a lot of love into it. I just wanted to say that we're looking forward to making a positive impact on our community, as we have at a therapeutic alternative. I think we have 20 letters of recommendation from our neighbors, including the Montessori School across the street. We're in a very upscale neighborhood, East Sacramento, near the fabulous Forties and right near McKinley Park. And we have been commended by numerous government officials on operating a model dispensary. So if you ever have any questions or you want to see behind the scenes, we do government tours every week. And I do public speaking just about every week. Next week, I'm speaking to the DMV about different administrative techniques, the endocannabinoid system, different cannabinoids, and how long these different molecules stay in the body and how they affect the human body. I also studied cellular molecular biology for five years, and am very dedicated to doing our part to provide cannabis as medicine. That's what we specialize in. So I just wanted to give everyone our, my business cards and let you know that I'm here to answer any questions or concerns, and we look forward to applying. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dean Wright. I'm a longtime local resident and business owner. I also own a commercial building in town that falls within the overlay. I think you got a copy of this, which kind of just circles the particular property that, for whatever reason, is not included, although I've spoken with Pierre quite a few times, and there seems to be no reason why that particular parcel was not included. My opinion, it is, is probably the most ideal location in the city of Placerville. If for no other reason, it meets and exceeds all the requirements. One thing that hadn't been brought up is parking. A lot of people don't know I have my own private parking lot behind the building. If you have employees, they take up public parking. So does the boss. So now you're taking away from patients.
Sir, just a quick, which address are you talking, are you referring to?
So the address is 721 Main Street. This is my current building remodel permit, my current business license. I am in the process of remodeling a small portion of this building for commercial resale storefront.
Gene, if I could interrupt just real quickly, just for the benefit of the council, I provided a copy of an overlay, an aerial overlay of 1144 Broadway, so you can identify exactly where the property is. It's on the corner of Mosquito and Broadway Court.
So I was talking about parking. We have a city parking lot also directly across the intersection. That was put there when the Blair Brother Lumber Company was taken down. And the city required 18 parking places, or the city required a parking lot, which has 18 parking places. And I can tell you, since it's established in sometime in 88, no matter what time of the day it is, no matter what time or what day of the week it is, no matter what month or year, you will find an average of one car parked in that parking lot. No business in that corner section has generated enough revenue or enough interest from not only local patrons, but from the tourists. And so when I talk about tourists, that's kind of what pays the rent for Placerville, not only Placerville, but Eldorado County. Eldorado County has relied on agriculture since the gold rush. Not only the wine industry, or Christmas trees, Apple Hill. It's very big business for, for not only Eldorado County, but the city of Placerville. And that's what attracts the tourists. And if you want to attract tourists, you're going to have to give them more than just a dispensary. Anybody that is on Highway 50 right now, no matter where they came from, they have a dispensary. We already have local dispensaries here that the local people can, can choose from. We don't know how the industry is actually going to evolve. I kind of see it similar to the wine industries. Hopefully, it will evolve like that. But as a commercial location, you're going to have to offer a wide variety of options. This particular building is historical. You've got some pictures there of back 1860. And you can see what the front of the building looked like. And it doesn't look like that now, and that's because the city of Placerville cut the front of the building off when they put Highway 50 in. Oop, I'm over time. Sorry. I would, I would like you to take special consideration of this particular parcel. It meets and exceeds all the requirements, and it would be a chance for the city to also gain, not just me personally, I could be anyone up here. The, the building, you've heard the term grandfathered in. Well, if this doesn't meet that term, then I don't know what ever would. So it's a very special building. I know you've got a lot of weight on your shoulders. I'm glad it's not on mine. But I would ask you to recognize that this building should have been included and therefore is included.
All right. Thank you very much for providing the information and for your comments. We will get with staff once we close the public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. My name is Annie Aubrey. I am part of a team of women who will be applying for one of the cannabis applications later this April. Each one of us has several years of experience in a variety of holistic approaches to wellness. I want to thank you for all you've done to get to the, us to this point, to give us an opportunity to apply. I'm very much looking forward to doing my part to become an impactful contributor to this community, so much so that I invested my life savings into buying a old beat-up building here in the overlay zone, that I'm very excited to put some love into restoring it, so it can become part of the community again and restored, to help people on their path to wellness. I seriously so, hope to, sincerely hope to be a part of this community for a very long time. Again, many thanks. I hope to hear an eye from everybody on this overlay map. I know you've put a lot of work into it, and it suits us just fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Someone else wish to address the council on this? Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, good evening, Mr. Carrici. Actually, I was going to recognize you as an ad hoc, former ad hoc committee.
Well, thank you, and you just did. So thank you very much. Three minutes? Wow, that's not very much time.
You better get to work.
Yeah, this is a work in progress. Things have, we, we discussed this at length, and we talked about the sensibilities of the community and all that stuff. I would remind folks to talk about how, there's always that, like, we need to talk about this more. There, the community talked twice about this particular issue. Once in two years ago, I think it was Prop 64, when it passed rather handsomely here in town. So the voters, at least, and the residents and the voters, the people that bother to vote in this community, voted in favor of it. And so that's the first test. It's like, well, we know what some of the community thinks. They actually voted for it. And then, of course, the tax part of it voted by even a bigger margin. It was approved by a bigger margin. So this is an idea that, at least in its concept and potentially its application, is supported by the community, at least those people that vote. So there's that. I don't believe this would apply to the fairgrounds, because the fairgrounds is actually county property. Okay? Okay, thank you. So that's not a problem. And I believe that also includes the Veterans Building and the museum. That's all, I think, on county property, and probably this doesn't even apply to that. But that would be a good question. I understand people wanting to opt out. I don't know about that as a process. If you own a piece of property and you do not want this on your property, don't lease, sell, entertain, talk to the people that want to do this. We have overlay zones for all sorts of things that people may or may not ever do on their properties. So this would just be one more thing. Certainly Ms. Puttiff made her feelings well-known. She will never have that happen. Any property owner can do that. I liked the thing, you have two kids? Yeah. He sells medical marijuana. His impact on his children apparently has been delightful, because when I saw them, they were delightful children. One of them was actually a scout, if I remember correctly. So at least that has been a good, positive influence, at least in that particular family. No one has ever said there aren't risks. No one has ever said that this would be perfect. No one's ever said that we're going to make gobs and gobs and gobs of money. No one's ever said that. What we've said is, this is an interesting opportunity for the city of Placerville. It has some financial burdens and some financial challenges, and this is a way to do it. But we have recognized every person with a concern, and we've tried to talk to them about it. Anyway, I've been on the ad hoc committee, and I guess I still am, until someone tells me no, or until it ends. I strongly urge you to do this, move this ball down the road. We can fine-tune things as the things happen, and I think that we can trust the folks out there. The other thing, too, I would like to add just about it, not to get into a tit-for-tat, but if you go to the fairgrounds on any given event, most of them, you'll go over there, and there are people that are absitively hammered, because they sell alcohol at the fairgrounds. They sell alcohol at the veterans hall, too, for that matter. We have to be careful about exactly how we sort of approach this, because the city of Placerville does all sorts of things, has all sorts of things going on in it that many people would find objectionable. Anyway, I'm done. Three minutes. Man, that is not a lot of time. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations on your mayoraldom.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Mr. Smith?
Yes, I, I came here for another matter, but I want you to know it's a distinct honor to come right behind John Carrici, and his first chance to learn what it's like to be on this side of the dais and face three minutes.
Three minutes.
What a pleasure. Listen, my concern is, you're not going to have a debate over whether to have dispensaries or not have the dispensaries. That's not the issue for the moment. My suggestion is, you know you're going to have issues down the road, please give some deference to local community members. I identify with them. I think there's three areas that have been described. If you narrow it down, you know you're going to have a trial period. You know however long it is that you're going to have these dispensaries, you're going to face some issues. So why not narrow it down where you're going to minimize those issues? So, for example, near the fairgrounds, how many people have been at a concert, large concerts, where cannabis is consumed? Now, I'm not talking about just somebody getting hammered with booze, because the difference is that when you're next to someone with cannabis, it's next to someone who's smoking, and it's in your face. So it's a little bit different. Can you imagine the law enforcement issues of somebody going through those crowds? I've seen it happen with large crowds. So it's, some respect to those issues are important. Up on Broadway, you know, I went to a business last night, and you know they now have two security guards in there all the time. That area's been trashed up for a long time by an absentee landowner who we all know about. And we have remnants of homeless people that are there. Last night, there was somebody who came in who clearly looked like they were, had the manifestations of drug usage and caused some problems, and the one business leaving materials behind. So there's some concerns that are legitimate about that area. So the only suggestion is, just narrow the overlays down now, because you're engaged in experiment. You're going to try this out, see what happens. Yes, it's true, you may have people never using some overlay, but why wait until a problem crops up when you've got people who've come here as citizens, like we want to encourage, expressed their views about local interests? And I think those should be given some deference. Thank you. Hey, listen, three minutes.
Oh, you could have given that to John. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item, bring it back to the council and staff for discussion. Before we go any further, I would just like to thank all the members of the audience for their thoughtful expression of their concerns on both sides of this issue. We certainly appreciate it, and it is difficult to stay within the time, and we appreciate your staying focused and presenting the item, staying, staying with the item that we are I would like to first suggest that Mr. Morris or Mr. Rivas has been keeping track of any specific, simple questions that have arisen. I think we've heard a lot of concern and opinion, not maybe so many questions, but I would start there.
I, I didn't pick up, like you, a lot of specific questions. There was one that came up from Ms. Taylor regarding businesses potentially being sued if they turned down a business and didn't allow them in. I could have the city attorney address that, but I don't believe that that will be an issue. I don't see any reason why that would be. And then regarding, I had a question regarding the testing. I did not personally go to any of the testing labs, but I believe our, one of our members, Mr. Carrici, did go to a testing lab and review what that is, and got a very good report as far as the cleanliness. There's not, you know, a lot of cannabis actually there. It's just a small amount that's tested, as Kelly mentioned, through the computers, and then I believe after it's tested, it's destroyed, is what I recall. And so we saw that that was a very clean business that potentially could happen and be a benefit to our community. So I don't believe there were any other specific questions that I came up with, unless Pierre or, or council, you saw any others that were mentioned.
That's for Mr. Rivas, first, please.
Yeah, just, just one comment I'd like to make. There was a speaker that was talking about some of the county-owned properties. I believe we meant to not apply the cannabis overlay zone to any properties that would be owned by the county. So generally speaking, you can certainly direct staff to take another look at that map, and we can certainly remove any properties that are under county ownership.
Okay, thank you, Pierre. Yeah, anything else? All right. At this point, council member questions or comments? Let's see. Questions?
Questions, comments?
Questions, comments?
There was, I think Ms. Taylor mentioned 600 feet in state statute versus 250 feet. I don't wonder if staff could make a comment on that, just for clarification for the public. for the public.
Yeah, that, that is correct. Um, the state statute does say 600 feet. We have the option to, to change that. Uh, we lowered it to 250 feet, as I mentioned, because of the fact, if we kept it at 600 feet, uh, you may have a hard time finding a parcel that qualified under that scenario. Um, we were very cognizant of that and, and felt, you know, we would like to keep it longer, larger radius, the 600 feet. However, um, it would've narrowed it down to such a small area, it, it kinda defeated the purpose, is what we felt, so.
Carrie, did you have a con, questions for staff?
Can I ask a question of audience members?
Hmm, no.
No? Okay.
Well, what was the question?
It's very quick. Um, for Kimberly and the other woman in the back, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I was just wondering what parcels you purchased?
We discussed earlier, we were, we should reveal. Um, yeah, so, we are...
Or if you just wanna say what street it's on, if that is...
Yeah, it's on Broadway.
On Broadway, okay, that's close enough.
And it's on the overlay map. Um, we just, with all the controversy, thought we would wait and apply with, along with everybody else, but if you think we absolutely should, say now we can.
That's fine, that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, we should refrain from doing that if we could.
Okay.
That's all right. Um, I was kinda curious as to where that was, too. Um, if there's no other questions, as a, yes, sir?
Um, on, uh, where did it go? I was gonna...
Were you gonna? I was gonna delve into, um, several things, including the parcels that have been presented.
All, I will defer.
And then, kind of, uh, as the other member of the ad, or the other council member of the ad hoc committee, um, I'll tell Mr. Kalerici now that, uh, I was going to have you come up later, after the clock was off, because you were a member, or you still are a member, of the ad hoc committee.
I can still talk.
No, you can't.
Specifically, Pierre, is there some reason why 721 Main Street, which I appreciate the historic photos and details, that one slipped off of the map? Is, is there anything...
721 Main Street or 1144 Broadway?
Well, Broadway Court.
Broadway Court. Um, I would have to defer, actually, a little bit more to the, um, cannabis subcommittee, but from staff's perspective, looking at that parcel, it didn't, it didn't lend itself readily to being one of those properties that clearly front Broadway or Main Street. It's kind of a little more hidden. It's on Broadway Court. Um, certainly, you can direct staff to include it. I believe it's zoned commercial.
Mm-huh.
Uh, has limited parking, it's a lot of square footage, may not meet parking, because if a new business goes in there, I, I think it was currently a warehouse, if it's a change in occupancy, they're gonna have to provide for adequate parking for the size of the facility that goes in there, that could be an obstacle. You can see in that aerial that the parking is rather small, but I would defer to the property owner. But, I think a lot of those issues would be flushed out with the application process. And so, this is more gen, a more general view of, is a cannabis use appropriate in this particular spot, based on its location, there at, um, Mosquito and Broadway Court?
Okay. So, I have a feeling that what we're going to wind up doing this evening is probably making some recommendations to staff to make some modifications to the map, with just a broad consensus with my colleagues that, that's part of what we'll be doing this evening. Um, and I would just like to go over briefly, based on some of the concerns and comments, the work that the ad hoc committee has done. And, you, you do have to remember that, that this is before the city council, because the voters of the state of California and the voters of the county of El Dorado voted in favor of recreational marijuana. As I've stated a number of times, I voted against it, which is my right as a voter to do. Um, I now have an obligation to make sure that the will of the voters is, is instituted in, in Placerville, um, to the best of my ability. Uh, one of my goals has been, and I think, um, my, uh, previous and current council members have shared it, is to make sure that we have the most inclusive controlling regulation that we can have for recreational cannabis sales in Placerville. This is a new industry. Twenty years from now, this will be probably laughed at, and most of these regulations will be removed. But, that's not the will of the people right now. The will of the people is to bring this thing forward with allowing the local jurisdiction to have the maximum amount of control to address every concern that most of you have expressed this evening. And that includes schools, uh, rehabilitation facilities, um, the impacts, uh, to adjoining neighborhoods, et cetera. Um, all of those things are clearly identified and addressed in the year that we have spent, um, developing and adopting the ordinance that actually drives this overlay map. Um, there will be notifications to your cer, to neighbors when a permit application is in process. Um, this is all done with a high level of transparency. Unfortunately, uh, a couple folks have left that were concerned. None of this has been driven by some grand idea that we're gonna make a bunch of money at this. Um, I think that cities that have done that have, I don't think that that, that is not a wise position to be in the cannabis industry. We have looked and addressed a lot of concerns, um, over the impacts of this new industry on sites that have been historically, uh, sale, sale, the sale of hard liquor. Those same sites are regular problems for our police department, and they feed the homeless issues that we deal with. Um, that is an accepted social evil, um, that, um, the number of liquor licenses in this town, on Broadway, Placerville Drive, what have you, is, is astounding. The number of bars it used to be on Main Street, play that nostalgia game sometime, it was, it's a big number. So, um, this is, again, a new industry, and we're doing our very best to make sure that we are, we are listening to all of the concerns of the community. I would suggest, uh, I, I think we've heard some very good comments, and I certainly appreciate all of the concerns that the citizens have shared with us. As we started to do the map, um, one of the things where we're very concerned about was the taking of a property right from someone who has a piece of property that's zoned for commercial use. Do we include this street? Do we leave that street out? How do we justify doing that? If you wanted to, uh, if you saw the cannabis industry as the next greatest thing, if we were just arbitrary in saying, "We're gonna leave big hunks of town out," um, then I think we would be, it would be irresponsible of, of, for the actions of the ad hoc committee, the recommendation that they did send to the planning commission, and they did have a hearing, and that is the map that we have behind us this evening. At one time, uh, for my colleagues, I want to let you know that the ad hoc committee did not include Cold Springs Road and Prose Road. We, we were looking at this as, um, with our law enforcement efforts in mind, where were the best places so that these would be high-visibility business fronts that would be, um, reducing the impacts into the neighborhoods that surround our commercial districts, and at the same time, allowing RPD to keep a close eye on these operations? Again, the concerns of the community is, we don't know how this is going to be, so we go to that higher level of concern. It's interesting now that we do have a, a fair amount of concern about the Prose Road's Cold Springs inclusion, um, because the, the, uh, recommendation could've very easily not included that. But, because of property rights fairness to those owners, we felt that that was a very busy road. It is commercially zoned. Um, I can remember used to be able to buy beer and wine at Luke's Liquors, that Luke's Market, that hasn't been there for years. But, over the years, uses come and go, as the market and the neighborhoods desire. So, I think we've done, um, an awful lot to address this, and again, it's hard to just look at this map and know all the other steps that an applicant is going to have to address, and all the other communications that the adjoining property owners are going to be aware of, that, that a permit is being requested. Couple of specifics, 721 Main Street, that seems like that should probably be considered, or as, I think Pierre refers to it, is 1144 Broadway Court. The, uh, issue with the, uh, fairgrounds and the veterans and the museum. Um, and I appreciate that observation, because I'm a member of the El Dorado County Historical Society, have been for a long time, and that is very much a, a child-based educational facility. It's very much a park. Um, there's the, there's the oversight issue of the fact that it belongs to the county, but it brings up the question of, do we wanna have cannabis sales across the street from where you may be unloading, uh, kids going for a field trip at the fairground or going to the county museum? Um, again, oddly, there's liquor stores right across the street, um, but that's a, those are accepted uses right now by society. So, I could see maybe having us revisit that, pull those out, and maybe pull those, pull those, uh, remove those parcels across the street from the museum, fairground entrance, and veterans. And again, oddly, our Vietnam vets get so much benefit from cannabis and the, and the illnesses that they suffer from serving. Um, so, that would be one of my initial re, uh, recommendations, is to make that change. Remembering those two changes.
Can Pierre point on the map where those properties are?
Can you, can you hit it, Mr. Rivas?
Okay.
That's the fairgrounds right there, and so, that's, that's that road off, there's Green Valley Road, there's Fair Lane, and so, I'm trying to find out where the road is. It actually goes to the, between Rayleigh's and, I can't really tell, but it's in that area.
I believe, I believe it is these two parcels right here.
So, that'd be like, uh, Big O Tires and...
Cause you've got the Shell Station.
Okay.
And it's only the two parcels that are...
The Shell, Shell Stations on that corner.
Yeah. We talked about those two, plus the, the five across the street.
Across the street, yeah. The adjoining, what is your thoughts on? Have you guys been, where they're at there?
Um, yeah. I, so, those are currently owned by the museum and the veterans hall?
And owned by the county.
By the county? I think if they're owned by the county, they probably should not be included.
Here, here.
That's why the fairgrounds is...
That would be the veterans hall. That would be the museum, fair entrances, right here. And, this would be Thompson's?
Yeah.
Yeah, Thompson's, and then, Tire Shop, Jefferson Station.
Real estate, um...
And there's, uh, breaking glass.
Right.
I think I would be open to removing that area. I mean, the reality is, we have a lot of kids going through the fairgrounds for a variety of things throughout the year, it's not just, uh, you know, the fair or anything else, so, that's a fairly high-trafficked area. Um, and you're talking about a relatively small amount of, of storefrontage.
I think that we should remove the two parts that belong to the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the area across the street is very heavily commercial.
Mm-hmm.
It's not like kids are walking back and forth from the fair to Thompson's Toyota. So, I'm not sure if, I mean, that's a big chunk of commercial real estate, right there.
The thought, I think the concern is if someone was to wanna put cannabis sales across the street in one of those existing, except that, say, the Tire Shop was to leave, which I can't imagine, but, um, somebody would, in the future, wanna put a cannabis sales. So, if we were to remove it, now, we leave it in, it's, Mr. Morris?
Sorry, no, I, I just wanted to remind the council of the rigorous, uh, application process, that they will be going through to score those, and all of these things that you're discussing can be considered and, and scored in that application process. And, and there'll be questions asked, you know, what types of uses surround, et cetera, what time of events, et cetera, surround, and so, all of that can be considered in that process. And, and so, that's one of the reasons also that we looked at, you know, a, not a real broad area, but a little bit broader area, uh, to open that up and to be considered, but then, it will be much narrower when you look at it through the eyes of that application process that will restrict and, and further provide a scoring system to each individual application, so...
Okay. Thank you, Cleve.
So, that would, so that, under that reasoning, that would be the same for the properties?
Uh, these ones here?
On the north side of Main Street, right?
Right, because you're talking about, they still would have to go through a rigorous application process. So, I'm just saying, I'm trying to, if we're gonna use that model, then I wanna apply that standard to the greatest amount of area as possible there to be consistent. Um, that would be my, one of my thoughts.
Yeah, again, one of the things that we looked at with that area, Councilmember Sergio, was, uh, when you apply that, as, as you look at it there, the north side of the street, uh, meets the 250 feet from the actual, you know, improved property. The south side does not. However, both of those areas will be required to get a variance from the planning commission because they do not meet that 250-foot, uh, uh, distance requirement. So, those, even on the north side of the street, if they're within 250 feet of that property, which we will look at in that application process, they may be required, depending on what property it is, uh, even on the north side, even though we're leaving that in, they may be required to, uh, get a variance from the planning commission in order to qualify. They have to be in the overlay zone in order to apply for a variance, is what we've determined.
And is that as, sort of, the crow flies, or as...
That's as the crow flies, correct.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um, my personal opinion, as a voter and a citizen, is that the cannabis industry, though new, is not gonna be any worse than the alcohol industry or tobacco. That being said, um, I think that we need to respect, you know, what we hear from community members, and in the case of Prose Road, um, there were, we, we received a letter, for those that don't know in the audience, with many, uh, local residents around that area. And since it wasn't in the original overlay map, I would be open to the idea of taking that section out.
You know, what are your thoughts about, we're 1144 Broadway Court, and, um, we have the note from Pierre that he needs to identify, um, 211 New Morning Court as a sensitive area, correct, Mr. Rivas?
Yes.
So, that would be one of the changes that we would make?
Yes, and we did provide, uh, staff provided the council with an aerial of the location of the New Morning, uh, youth shelter.
So, the other piece of property, we have the, we would consider the removal of, um, the Prose Cold Springs corridor. And the other question in, um, that came forward was, the property up there at 1560 Broadway, which is the old stadium club, and it's in between the, uh, Mini-Mart and the indoor shooting gallery. And so, we've heard from an applicant that he would have 24-hour security on there. Um, this is up and beyond, um, the blighted area that I think we're all familiar with, and the out-of-town owner. Um, it is a property that they have done a very nice job on bringing it up to a whole new standard from, um, the previous, uh, operation that was there. What's your, what's my, what are my colleagues' thoughts on it, including that?
I, I'm in favor of including that. Um, I think it's relatively, I know we're going east of, of Schnell at that point, uh, but I would be in favor of including it. They've done a great job in, in bringing up the standards, uh, of that area. I mean, the gun range has been great, right there. It would, I think it's fixing that, that portion. Um, I've, I'd never, never, I never saw the, the reason for stopping at Schnell anyways if we were gonna do this. Um, so, I would be in favor of including that parcel.
I would be okay with including that.
Thank you, Mr. Sergio. Mr. Morris?
If I could add, and I'm gonna ask Pierre to comment on this, I would have a concern, I think we would have a concern with just including that one parcel, that gets into what I believe Pierre calls spot zoning.
It would be called spot zoning?
And it's discouraged, and so, you may have to look at, if you want to include that parcel, you may need to include everything up to that, which is something that was a concern that we addressed on the committee.
And, can, sorry, with it? And what was the concern with the rest of that property? I mean, I don't have a problem with including the entire area. I mean, I don't have a problem with including the entire area.
The concern was that there seemed to be, and I'd look at our police chief and ask him if he wants to comment on this, but that upper area above there seems to be a higher instance of crime and calls that happen, and a lot of it happens in the property that you referred to, Mayor Acuna. But Chief, anything, would you agree with that and that?
So yes, I would be concerned about granting a zoning or putting the overlay map to allow these businesses up there because there is a day-feeding area for our homeless population. And so we get a lot of calls for service on foot traffic, other persons that are under the influence walking up and down Broadway, which is, it's not safe for pedestrians anyway. And my fear would be that that would increase our calls for service and our, drain our resources. So that's my feedback.
Also, kind of following up on what the chief said, we have had complaints from property owners, at least in that area, about crimes and things occurring on their property as a result of vagrancy and homelessness and other things. So there is some concern about that. Some of the complaints, they're very true, and the things that were taking place were pretty disgusting, let's put it that way.
Grocery outlet, that shopping facility is not included in the overlay map.
We did not go west or east of Schnell School Road.
And, because there's a lot of vacant buildings there and tons of parking and it's out of the way from?
It was for that same reason, but same reason because of the, the, blighted conditions, vagrancy, crime that we foresaw in that area.
I would like to ask my ad hoc committee member, Mr. Clarici, to come forward. And thinking of the idea that, I understand the concern with spot zoning, and we may want to just look at that one, I'll call it a block of Broadway, the gun range, perhaps the hotel side, the existing, what is it, National Nine? And the, up to the mini-mart? But not further east, absolutely, the chief addresses that, that is just a hotbed of problems in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of a contiguous piece of property if you go up, up into that, the liquor store there. So there is a sort of community of interest, if you will, in that whole thing and stopping there.
Mr. Clarici, could you shed some light on?
Yes.
On this subject? No, on the issues of, seriously, the fact that we did at one time have Perro's and Cold Springs as, because of the concerns of the?
When we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. And also this little block of Broadway.
Right, okay. To refresh everyone's memories, we did chat about this on a number of occasions and why we stopped at Schnell School Road, and there was a couple of reasons. One is the issues with the one large property, but then there are these issues that have been described and chronicled all the way up Broadway, all the way to the Upper Room. And so, and this is an experiment. I have high hopes that this experiment will go well. So I think it'll be fine. But we are sort of running a small experiment here in terms of this one issue because it's new to town. And so the thought was, because of the issue starting, unfortunately, starting right there and going to the east, and the concerns of the community up there, and one of the, and this sort of speaks to the folks over there on Pierrot's, because if you're going to kind of talk about folks that have come to this body and said, hey, we have a concern about Cold Springs Road, we have a concern about Pierrot's, we have a concern about this like little area here because of these things, which is fine, it's totally legitimate, well then you better listen to the folks up there on Broadway. And Broadway folks, they'll tell you, they want to go all the way down to Schnell School Road because it starts there. And unfortunately, there are some responsible property owners that live above that, but the problem starts at Schnell School Road. And it just keeps going that direction. And so this was an, a way of sort of sho, sort of showing the folks on that part of Broadway, a little love and some understanding of their circumstances up there. And it leaves plenty of the rest of the town to do the cannabis thing. So that was the logic. You folks can employ any logic you so desire, but that was the logic prior to December. So that was it. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Clarici? Thank you. All right. So there is concern, yes or no, for adding the area around 1560 Broadway? Using the right address.
I think it might, I mean, honestly, I think it might help those buildings that are having a hard time finding renters, but I also think that it's a lot harder to deal with the problem after we've had it. So, you know, as John mentioned, this is an experiment, and maybe we should start small, it's easier to add on than it is to take away once the business is in place.
Okay, very good. And then what was, what were the final thoughts on the area, the parcels across from the museum and the fairgrounds?
I'm okay with leaving them in. I mean, my, my, my goal here is to try to keep in or to be as consistent with as much area as possible as opposed to taking things out. Kara brought up a good point. Which is why I didn't actually mind, even with the concerns, I actually am still okay going further up east of Schnell, because you do have to start. Well, there'll always be a reason not to do something there, but there should be a reason to start doing something. And so anyways.
Are there any other changes to the map that the council would like to make this evening?
Well, I definitely think 1144, 721, whatever it is, should be included. I don't have, see any issue about not including that into the overlay.
I agree with that.
All right. So what we're going to do this evening is, I thank you again for all of your very genuine concern in communication to the council, your concerns about these areas. We're going to send this back to staff with some recommendations, and then bring it back at our next meeting with those changes made. And hang on just a second, and I'll go over those changes. Is that, making sure that I'm heading off in the right direction?
I want to, I want to get back to you, Mayor, I maybe steered you a little bit wrong. If you want to make those changes tonight, you can actually do that and still adopt.
I would prefer to do that if you're comfortable.
But if you wanted to wait, you can too. So if you can be, you know, specific, thank you, in what you want to do, we can actually make those changes tonight and introduce the ordinance with those changes.
Introduce the ordinance, it's a way of the first reading?
Correct.
Okay. So, the mayor usually doesn't make motions, and I'm not about to start this evening, but I will definitely guide us into what we have just discussed. And I believe we're all in favor of the removal of the Perro's Road, Cold Springs Road loop?
I am, I'm not.
Oh, then we have conflict. Kara? I think there's enough other areas that, that area is so impacted by the DMV.
What's your thoughts?
You know, my?
We had it out, we?
I've read through the business ordinances that passed, and they are very strict. I mean, these are going to be very discreet businesses. So I don't personally share the exact concerns that the, the community members that drafted the letter do. But, you know, there, there is enough pushback from enough people in that area that I feel like we could hold off now and, like I mentioned earlier, add it in if, you know, we have three retail shops and three other facilities and, you know, everyone gets used to it and realizes there's not problems or, you know. That's, that would be my preference.
Yes. The, one of the speakers mentioned the Moore property, and then, and then the property due east of them that they're going to be moving into temporarily. Pierre or Cleve, do we have that removed or identified as a sensitive use?
The Moore property, I discussed how the city attorney would not be defined as a sensitive use.
That's interesting.
Under the definitions that the state has put in.
So what would be the, what would be your thoughts on removing that parcel? Or, certainly seems like a sensitive use to me, but?
Again, reminder, that can be considered in the application process, however.
In the, just to follow up on what Cleve said, in the application process that you'll be talking about next, there is a comment in there about sensitive uses and recognizing that the statutory definition is fairly limited. You're talking about schools, K through 12, that sort of thing, youth centers, which is somewhat limited, limited in its definition. But there are things like bus stops, parks, well, not parks, but they're included, but let's say the fairgrounds, for example, or let's say the Moore workshop, which are a type of sensitive use, but not necessarily a statutory one. Businesses that, cannabis businesses that propose to locate in close proximity to those uses, whether it's 250 feet or 300 feet, are probably not going to get as high a score as a site that has a better location. So that can be, as Cleve has been pointing out, taken into consideration when determining who is going to be a successful applicant for a license.
And John, I forget, I can go back and look, but it's community support or neighborhood support, that's, it's a scored?
Certainly.
It's a scored category, correct?
Yes, compatibility with the neighborhood, community support, those are all categories that would be looked at.
So an applicant would have to take that into account, that if they were going to be on Perro's, Cold Springs, and you have a large percentage of, of residents that are opposed, that is may reflect in their?
Exactly.
In their?
Yes. Just procedurally, because of the discussion where you folks were going a minute ago, tonight's action does not vote on the ordinance. It simply introduces it in the vote on the waiving. So that'll come back. But it does take, since we have two members that have recused themselves, to adopt an ordinance, it will take three votes. It takes the majority of the membership of the council.
We have to all agree.
Yes.
Supermajority. Yes, we all have to agree. So I guess I would ask? So I guess it goes back to, to what John just said, I mean, in terms of leaving in, taking out, at this point, I'm still in favor of leaving in because we do have this process, a rigorous process that will allow that community input to be heard. And so again, as opposed to limiting, and I think we get into this whole, well, we're just take this out, let's keep taking this, let's keep this in, let's go forward with what we have in now, and in fact, we've added in a couple of more spots, and then let the process, you know, play out to see what will ultimately come to the top in terms of a viable applicant. And this is for me, who wanted to limit it to two applicants to begin with, so I'm not necessarily, you know, I think this is a huge saving grace for City of Plasterville, but I do think if we're going to do this, and, you know, let's, let's take this as fair as possible, have as large of an overlay area, take it into account with the ad hoc committee, have, has worked on diligently all, all this time. But I, I just can't, at this point, I'm not convinced yet to pull out a whole area.
Then you're speaking, we're discussing the Perro's?
We're speaking of Perro's, and, because I think, I kind of feel like there's consensus on, on the other areas, at least.
And I would, you know, to kind of quote Kara, you know, we're at the beginning of this, and Perro's and Cold Springs have their own unique challenges and issues that, that are neighborhood concerns. And given that this is at the beginning of this industry's birth into this town, to remove that area, I don't think would be a huge detriment to the, to whoever's going to want to apply. And so to listen to the concerns of a neighborhood and address that is, I think is, in this instance, is showing some goodwill that we did here. It's, it's a secondary business community, and as I said, the, the ad hoc committee, we had it off, as we began, we said, no, we don't want to go down there, we want to keep it along Plasterville Drive and those store furnitures. And then it was because of an issue with, seriously, with the property rights to, say, well, maybe a property owner over there would really do well and could improve one of those properties.
Did any property owners come forward asking?
No.
To be in that zone?
Nope, nope. We did, we did that in a vacuum. No, I'm sorry, I don't, I appreciate your, nope, 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 we're not going there. No, I, I'm sure you can, but I don't, if I, if I open it for one, then I need to open it for everybody, and that would not be fair. So I will, thank you anyway. But, so I would ask you to consider this, the, the community's concerns and the issues that that neighborhood, both in and out of the city, deals with on a regular basis. And think that we could probably be successful without it.
We could go back to two applicants.
No, I think that ordinance has already been adopted, hasn't it, Cleve?
Yeah, the resolution has been adopted. Yeah. I appreciate you.
Staff can make a suggestion, maybe rather than excluding the entire area, which is quite large, you have a lot of properties in there. If, if you look on the proposed map, possible drive in Perro's Road, sort of, there's sort of an island in there. Staff would recommend at, at a minimum, maybe retain that island and then exclude everything that's outside of the island, everything that's north or along.
So the north side?
North of Cold Springs, eliminate.
Where are we talking about exactly?
Let me get my pointer and I'll point it out to you. There's that, there's the island right there, there's Plasterville Drive, and there's Perro's Road. And it connects with Cold Springs right there, but if, there's a lot of, I would think from a planning perspective, good commercial properties in there. You have Ferguson's, you got a lot of square footage. And then you take out everything outside on the north, north of Cold Springs, north, north of Perro's Road. That way, you're getting it away from the residential areas that are adjoining those properties. That's just a staff recommendation.
Pierre, that sounds like a really good recommendation to me.
Thank you, Pierre.
I would be in favor of that.
I would be in favor of that, too. All right. And we, you know, and I appreciate Pierre's efforts because one of the things we don't ever want to do is try and design on the fly.
Yeah.
Since Attorney Driscoll has informed us that we can actually move this thing along, I think that that is also a very important thing. That's an add.
Well, I, I will go ahead then and make a motion that we move this forward with the addition of 721, 1144. I think we're excluding the fairgrounds and?
The county-owned, the two.
The two county-owned. And then that northern section of the Cold Spring, Perro's area.
Just if I might characterize your?
Certainly.
Your motion is to, actually, you're introducing the ordinance, excuse me, with those stated revisions and moving to waive the first reading.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
It took the longest time for Attorney Driscoll to train me on this one. Introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading. All right, so, that is a motion.
That is a motion.
And I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So, we, we have moved this forward with those changes, and the second reading of this will be in 30 days? Two weeks?
Two weeks.
And, oh, excuse me, in two weeks, and then the ordinance goes into effect in 30 days after the second reading.
Correct.
So again, thank you all very much for your time and your input. We will, I will ask you to please trust us, there is a tremendous amount of information regarding the criterias on these permits that, that wasn't part of this evening's discussion. These are not going to be easy businesses to open.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to make sure, just for clarification, we're going to add, we're going to be adding that, the Old Stone Building there located on Mosquito and Broadway Court. We're going to exclude any of the county-owned properties, and then we're going to retain the island there, Perro's and Cold Springs, but excluding everything to the north. Those are the three?
That is correct.
Map provisions we're going to make. Thank you.
Thank you for, that is correct. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll be back at approximately 8:40. And thank you all again. And I will just go on and call in the meeting back to order, and we are going to move on to item 12.6, which is a request to adopt the resolution regarding the replacement of the roof at Old City Hall. the roof at Old City Hall. And I believe Mr. Lishman this evening is filling in for a couple of different departments and is going to have this report. Mr. Lishman, please, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Acuna, members of the council. The purpose of this item for you this evening is to award a construction agreement with Garland DBS Incorporated and approve unforeseen budget appropriations to replace the roof on Old City Hall. At this time, it has been determined that the roof on Old City Hall is unable to be repaired and needs to be completely replaced. The building is occupied and the water intrusion is compromising the structural integrity of the interior. Staff worked closely with Tim Sam, Sam Maniego, sorry, Tim, if I said that wrong, of Garland DBS Incorporated. And Tim is here in the audience with us tonight. And we worked through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Program. U.S. Communities is a government purchasing cooperative co-owned by five governmental entities that provides purchasing solutions to local and state government agencies. Staff has determined that the U.S. Communities contracting process yields the best price by eliminating contractor markup using volume discount for bonding, volume pricing for materials, and includes manufacturer technical observation of the insulation process to ensure proper material placement. Roofing contractors were solicited to perform work and the bid, the project went out to bid in November. The city received three bids that met the predetermined specifications for the project. Garland DBS Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a submission of $102,775. The city council adopted the fiscal year 2018-19 capital improvement program budget, which appropriated $60,000 for the Old City Hall roof replacement project number 41902. Due to higher-than-expected bid amount, staff recommends the city council approve a $2,034 budget appropriation from the general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures and a $51,019 budget appropriation from the general fund, unassigned fund balance for a total project budget of $113,053. This also includes a $10,278 contingency fund. So with that, tonight, staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution approving a construction agreement with Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $102,775 to remove and replace the old roof on Old City Hall, capital improvement project number 41902, and approve a $2,034 budget appropriation from the general fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures for the said project, and approve a $51,019 budget appropriation from the general fund unassigned balance, fund balance for the said project. So with that, that includes our staff report, and at this time, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Matt. Excellent report. Are there any questions for Mr. Lishman regarding this item? I'll go ahead and open this item to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment. And I would like to offer Mr. Tim Samenego a moment if you'd like to address the process. I know we engaged your company. Tim, perhaps you could give us a little bit of background as to the, the scope of all the inspections that you did on the various city buildings. I appreciate it. Good evening.
Thank you. Tim Samenego with Garland DBS. Yeah, you're able through that U.S. Communities contract to purchase the material direct, it's great savings options for every, every public entity. Not only do you guys, does the public entity through that purchasing vehicle, all the specifications you get at, all the wind uplift engineering calculations, you will also get a minimum of three site inspections every week while the project's going on. And that's all included with the package. And that's, the U.S. Communities contract is, is a contract that you guys made, and it went out to bid to the United States, and we as a company won it throughout the United States. So this is your guys' contract that you, you guys made, and we were just, we were the, we won it on three prongs, lowest prices, best service, best warranty in the United States. So it's a great vehicle. We, almost all public entities are using this, the U.S. Communities program now, so.
Thank you. And you've also had the opportunity to take a look at all of our roofs.
We did. I did do roof inspections for all your roofs, and at the time, I was working with Steve Yule and Matt, and I did a 10-year assessment. And so you guys now have in your possession a 10-year projected, you know, what, what you're looking at the next 10 years, so you guys can actually be proactive instead of reactive when things come up.
Thank you. And I had one last question for either yourself or Mr. Lishman, and that would be, as we know, the building does need to have some structural reinforcement work done to it. And of course, the expense of this roof is the material and the, and the project that's being proposed as suitable for, you know, as adaptable to any future changes that may take place underneath it as we make those structural improvements?
Yeah, well, the, the specification, the scope of work, it will, we will be removing everything, all the way down to the wood deck of the building, replacing any dry rot and damage, and then installing all the brand-new roof system. So it should, it'll, you know, any alterations will be, you know, easy to do, because anything that's not being used right now, we're going to remove it, any abandoned penetration, anything like that, it'll be removed, so it'll clean everything up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Samenego? All right. Well, Tim, I appreciate your staying through the meeting and your efforts in getting up on all of our roofs this past summer.
Thank you.
Doing that assessment for us. Right. Well, with that, if there's no other questions, I would ask for a motion on the item.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Barelli and seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli.
Aye.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you very much to staff and to our consultant, all those that bid on this. It's a very important project to make sure that we preserve and protect Old City Hall. Do we have an idea when the project might begin construction, Matt?
We think we had talked about sometime in April, right, Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much. We look forward to it. All right. And so we'll go back now to our regular schedule, which would be item 12.1, which is again, another cannabis issue. Review a proposed application process and fees for cannabis business regulations and provide input to staff. Now, are there any conflicted interests on this particular item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask that question, so that there, this is, and Mr. Driscoll, perhaps just quickly, you could explain why this is different than. The initial item that we just covered at the public hearing involved land use ordinance, and because it was a land use ordinance, there's a specific provision in the code that relates to land uses, and when an item is before a governing body, such as the council, relating to use of land, and it involves, in this particular case, income-producing properties, then those are considered material in terms of a conflict. There are exceptions that can be used, but in this case, we decided that the best way to proceed was to recuse the two councilmembers that owned real property. This item does not involve the land use. It's more of the application process, unless one of them were to be applying or considering applying for a permit, then they would have to be recused. But other than that, they wouldn't be.
They don't have any plans.
Okay. No plans. Patty has no plans. Dennis has no plans. All right. Well, it's important to clarify that, though, because it can be confusing to the public what's going on here. All right, 12.1. I believe, Mr. Morris, you are going to present this to us this evening?
I will, thank you. And again, just a reminder, this is simply a review of the proposed application and fees, and to answer any questions you may have, this will be brought back to you at your next meeting on January 22nd for actually adoption of a resolution, which will adopt these, these application fees. So, as you know, we've been working with our consultant, Hindaliter Delamas, to assist us in this process. They have put together this application, which we have worked with them on and reviewed and made some changes to on a staff level. And then we also worked with them on the fees and working through what the requirements would be to review the applications on a, on a staff level and for others. So with that, we have, as you can see here, there's a couple of things that are necessary, actually, kind of a pre-application process. That is the zoning verification letter, which will be issued by the Director of Development Services, Pierre Vas. There's a $205 cost for that, and that is to cover the cost of his review of the site to make sure that it truly does qualify. And then there's a background check that is required, and the cost of that is $476 for the applicants. That is primarily, will be a fingerprint done through our police services, and then the review of the results of that that will take place. And then we go into the actual application process, the first phase, cost of that is $4,165, and you have the justification for that, you have also in the application process, you can see what that phase covers, that's the initial phase. And there's a, there's a point system, a scoring system, you can see in the application, and there's a minimum number of points that an applicant must get in that to qualify. HDL, again, will be assisting us in the review of those applications and making sure that they meet all of the eligibility requirements. That's kind of the preliminary phase. The second phase is the application and evaluation and initial ranking, which again, will be, that's after they've gone through this, that first phase, and they will receive a scoring for that second phase also. And then they move on to the third phase, which is an interview and, and their second ranking based on those interviews. And again, the, the combination of the first two scores moves them on to that, that third phase. And then the, the final phase is the review by myself and the recommendation of the issuance of those permits. So you can see, the goal is to try to, if, if an applicant is eliminated in the first phase, then they obviously don't have to pay those fees for the remaining phases going forward. So it's to try to control that, that cost for them. We have provided in here a comparison, one of the cities that we've kind of modeled a little bit after and worked with, looked at is the city of Colfax, and you can see their fees that they have here and were a little bit higher. Possibly, some of that may be related to salaries. As you seen, it's seen the justification attached here, it's based on actual salaries of employees in the city that would be reviewing the applications and working on the process. So with that, again, this is simply a review at this point. As you can see, the application is, is fairly detailed in, in what they will be required to submit as part of their application and what will be reviewed and scored during that process. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Myself, Mr. Driscoll has also assisted quite a bit with this. He can answer questions if you have any on the process.
Thank you, Cleve. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Morris at this point, or Mr. Driscoll, hard-working attorney this evening? And again, here is another step of overview, if you will, on this process, in ensuring that the city is protected and that there is a clear, outlined process. All right. If there's no questions for staff, I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment on this item. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council on item 12.1, the cannabis application that's before us this evening? Good evening again. If you could restate your name for the record.
Rod Miller, Eldorado County Growers Alliance and Metro Commercial Realty. Perhaps you could clarify the, the types of businesses that can prepare applications. Will, an application for a micro-business be entertained, a micro-business that has retail as a component?
Will go ahead and give us your questions, and then I'll ask staff to answer them for you.
And then I, I think it's, it's, it's very clear what you have in this application process. I appreciate all the, the staff's work. If I haven't said that before, I'm remiss, you all, it's been a year, and you all have done a tremendous amount of work, and I think you've done a great job of protecting the community's interests and the community, the nature of the community and community risks. So basically, at what point after Monday, April 8th, 2019, would you anticipate the first review of the applications? Those are my two questions.
All right. Cleve, do you have those? We'll get those answered for you a little bit later. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on 12.1?
Sorry, not that fast. That was, again, Kelly Chisano.
Thank you, Kelly.
Pure Life Collective, Diamond Springs. As stated prior, since I've been with you guys through this process, I do plan on being one of the applicants in the city. We also do own a building that we are planning to improve. We are not going to disclose the location, but we, you know, we do want to see the community around us grow and change for the better. You won't recognize it from any other business as far as from the outside. I've heard a lot of things tonight. I know that was probably more the map thing, but you won't know that our business is any different. As far as the application process, I think that HDL and you guys have all done a really good job. The county has used HDL as well in some of their consulting, and everything that I've seen seems very thorough and thought out. This is, I know you guys have put a lot of work into this, and I want to commend you again, staff, and everybody that's put in the countless time for it. Real quick, I didn't catch how much the background check was going to be, and so if you could answer that afterwards, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the council on 12.1?
Good evening, Kimberly Cargile, also an applicant. We just wanted to say thank you to everyone for all your hard work on this. This application is extensive, and it looks like it's going to be a big jog ahead of us. And I think that that is something that the community does support, because they want to make sure that whoever applies for these licenses is well-betted. So I think that even though it's going to be extremely difficult, we are looking forward to it, and we have read through the application and the fees, and we do ask for your yes vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? I'll close the public comment at this time on this item, and ask Cleve to, I believe we had like three questions.
Yeah, first question regarding micro-businesses, are allowed business in, in the zone. We will allow three businesses in the city. So a micro-business would be considered one of those if someone were awarded and applied as a micro-business. The review timeline, I'm going to have to step back on that. I don't have an answer for you on that yet. We, we will keep it moving. We plan on continuing this process, and once, once we close the applications, we'll start that review immediately. And the process will take a little bit of time. As you can see, it's fairly extensive, but we will move immediately with it, so.
I believe the other question was the cost of the background check?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, $476.
All right. Thank you. I would be remiss if I did not ask the ad hoc committee member in the back of the room if he had any comments on this item.
Do you mean parties?
No, sir. Thank you, sir. Hey, we've been working on this for a year. All right. Is there any other questions or comments with, from council members? I would entertain a motion.
I have one question about the background check.
There's no motion necessary on this.
You've done such a great job.
Any input you wanted to provide.
I don't bother with it. Kara, did you have a?
One question about the background check.
Yeah.
For people that have marijuana convictions, is that going to negatively affect their application?
I'm trying to remember.
If it's a felony, it will. But a misdemeanor, probably not.
Speak, speak into your microphone, please.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Then we'll ask staff to, Cleve, when you bring this back to us.
We'll be back at your next meeting.
All right. Excellent job. So there were, there are no changes, so we'll bring this forward at our next meeting, and well, it seems very likely that it'll be adopted as is written this evening. All right. Thank you for that. 12.2, review a proposed vegetation management ordinance and provide input to staff. I got it this time, Cleve. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As. As you know, over the past year, there's been a lot of talk about the, the fire situation in California, the devastating fires that we, we've had. I did mention to the council, I had the opportunity to travel to the city of Paradise and speak to the city manager and see what went on there, and, and I will still bring back a report on that at a later date. I don't have that prepared yet, but the purpose of this item is to review our own ordinance and look at things that we need to improve to provide a more fire-safe community. As you know, we live right on the edge of the forested areas, in-forested areas that is in a high fire danger area. And so a couple of you, well, several of you have brought up to us that the need to look at this issue and, and help educate our community and become more fire-safe. So the purpose of this item tonight, I want to emphasize, this is a very, I don't know how many times to say it, rough, rough, rough draft. I, I put this together actually very quickly based on an ordinance that the county is working on, they've been working on for some time, and I've been participating a little bit in their committees that they are doing. And so the purpose of tonight was simply to look at this ordinance, get any questions answered that you may have that I, if I can regarding those, if there's comments you have regarding it. I, I recognize there are still quite a few changes that need to be made to this to make it correct and make it work, but I felt it was important to get this discussion started. If you wanna be effective in, in starting to enforce and, and starting cleaning up some areas this spring, we need to be doing it now, basically, to make that happen. So if, if we can, my goal is to bring this back fairly quickly, if not the next meeting, the meeting after that for, for consideration. So I would welcome any of your comments tonight. I've received some comments, I know, I see Sue Rodman in the community, she sent me some comments on it that I fully agreed with, and it was based on the fact that it was very rough draft at this point.
No, rough, rough, rough.
Rough, 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 yes. So I, I accept any of those comments, criticism, that's fine, 'cause I recognize that it is, it needs some work still. But I think it is a good foundation to, to start the process and get us up to, up to code where we should be. And then the other side of this will be identifying ways to actually enforce it. That's gonna be another concern that we are going to have, and I've had that discussion with some of you, and I've mentioned that we, we have applied for a grant through FEMA that we are very hopeful that we will get, and that will greatly assist us in being able to begin this enforcement process over the next two years. So with that, I'm not gonna go through the details of this. Just quickly to mention, probably the, the main component of this is that our current ordinance says that you have to have a 30-foot separation from, or defensible space around your, your property. This actually is in compliance with the state fire code, which requires 100 feet. The question's been asked, well, what if I don't have 100 feet from my property, or from my house to the property line? Well, you're only required to go up to your property line, obviously, and then the other property on next door would be responsible for their side. So that's some of the language we need to fix and correct in here, and we will do that. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have, and I'll be happy to answer those.
Cleve, I was wondering, and I know you're gonna prepare a, a report for us, but did you, was any of this involved when you talked to the city manager at Paradise? Have they, have, did they have anything like this in place, or?
I'm trying to recall. They, they had done a lot of fire preparation up there, so I'm guessing that they did.
I knew they had an evacuation plan, but I.
They did, they did, and I, and I think they had done a lot of work in this area. The one statement I will made, the state, that the, the, the city manager mentioned, she said, "No amount of preparation or et cetera would have avoided the problem that they had up there."
I heard that time and time again on the reports from the, yeah. Interesting.
There is one part on these pages.
No page number, sorry.
One, two, three, probably the fourth page, fifth page. It's talking about the following requirements for, it's section five on the next page over.
Thank you.
And it's talking about removing all of the, the litter from underneath a tree. And I've had people come out to my property and say, "You wanna let that lay."
Yep.
And it's good for, it's good for the trees, it's good for the bugs, it's good for water retention, but this says to tree litter, leaves, and bark conifer needles to be removed completely. And so from my perspective, that, that's, there's a conflict in terms of the value of that versus the fire prevention. If there's a happy, happy middle ground there, that'd be good.
Okay. I'll, I'll look into that more and see if I can get a better, better answer on that. Yeah.
Patty, did you have another comment?
I did, along those lines. I seem to remember that, remember the horrendous fire they had up at Tahoe? In the, it's King, was that the King?
No.
No, that, that was the one. Anyway, my understanding was, at that time, that they, the needles were, that there was some kind of an ordinance that they had, that they couldn't remove those needles, and they blamed a lot of the fire on that.
And they've since changed it.
Have they changed it? I, I was gonna suggest maybe we look into.
I saw that same issue that Dennis just rose, because I have oak, live oaks that never stop dropping leaves. And if you read it down, I'll dig it out, but if I read it again carefully, and it, it does allow, what they're talking about is an accumulation of leaves. And so in other words, if all, you have your fall leaf come, you know, in the winter, and that piles up, that they want removed. The typical droppings that a live oak produces year-round is not subject to enforcement. It's talked about tillin' it under, and I felt safe that I wasn't gonna, because you're gonna cause all kinds of erosion problems. It's not good for the trees. The trees need the nitrogen from the rotting leaves. It would go against all good arborist activities. And Patty is remembering correctly, Tahoe Regional Planning forbid people from removing pine needles because they were concerned about erosion going down into Lake Tahoe. It was all part of their clarity of the lake program. And so people would get fined. They had a pretty, and still do have a pretty active, robust protect, enforcement program up there. A good friend of mine, one year he had to take it down to Bear Dirt, they had the fire. Took about a season, all of a sudden pine needles were fine. So it was a huge issue that they, they had over, over accumulations of pine needles so they could make sure that they were protecting clarity of the lake.
So I'm not understanding what you're saying, a certain amount of oak leaf. Did they measure it?
No, I think, I will, I will find this sentence or the paragraph, and I'll.
Now, Mayor Acuna, if staff can make just a real brief comment on that. I've, I've, I've seen it in, in one of the fire codes, I can't remember where it is, and staff will help the city manager find it, but there was a provision that allowed for, and I believe it was something like an inch or two inches, or maybe it's under two inches of leaf litter that's permitted on, you know, on the ground that doesn't constitute a, a fire hazard. Anything above that where, as the mayor pointed out, you have some accumulation where it's gonna then increase the fire potential, I think was the issue, but we'll look for that.
So is this, is this gonna be a, a combination of complaint-driven versus just proactive enforcement?
Primarily, we hope this to be proactive. But obviously, complaint-driven will, will be a part of it, but primarily, as you read in there, there's some pretty strict guidelines of, we're, we're to send out letters by a certain time, and I forget what the date is, I believe it's in January sometime, and then, and then they have until, I believe it's either April 1st or May 1st to, to respond. And to either say, "We've cleaned it up," or "We are cleaning it up," or something, at least be working with us on, on getting that cleaned up. Now whether or not we attack the whole city at once, which we probably will not, because that will be a large task for us to do, but we may focus on the higher-risk areas and focus on those in the beginning and then, and then move out from there, so.
Any other comments for staff? I would like to, Karen, did you have any?
Well, one question. The 100 feet that's recommended, is, is that because 100 feet is what's now considered required for embers carried by the wind? Or where'd that number come from?
That came from the state fire code.
Okay.
How that's established, I would have to talk to a fireperson, who, we had a bunch of them here earlier, but we don't have now.
We let them escape.
I can try and get an answer for you on that, but I don't know.
Well, the reason I ask is if, you know, properties butts up against Highway 50, they have, you know, that's about, what, 50 or 60 feet wide? So would that cut into what they're required to clear? Because they already have, you know, X amount of feet of clearance?
Well, it'd be from their house out would be where the 100 feet would be required.
Okay.
So it's defensible space around their house.
Not property lines, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah. So 100 feet out from the structures that are, that are on the property.
I did have one member of the community ask about trees that are leaning over from the neighbor's property going into their property and creating what would be a nuisance or a fire hazard, and that's, that's part of it.
I believe, yeah, I believe through the abatement process, we can, we can work on that and correct that, yeah.
And then I have one comment, if I may. I think that this is a really good document, and thank you for doing it. It's really necessary and timely. I do think it's really important, I mean, this, this will be financially difficult for a lot of people. Clearing trees is not inexpensive, so I think it's really important that we have some programs in place, whether it's increasing Eldorado disposals yard waste removal during fire clearing season, or having tools available that the community can use to, you know, chip wood or weedy, and, and hopefully the grant, when we find out about that, will cover some of those things, but financial assistance for people that can't pay.
Right. On those same lines, at one time we had that chipping program.
Right.
Where you could order, is that in the, is that in, has that been discussed at any point with the, the county, or?
That was, if you and I are thinking the same thing, that was the Fire Safe Council that had that. And I think with the announcement that Mr. Zalinski made this morning, that Placerville will now have a Fire Safe Council, if they have a program and the grant funds available for that, then it should be open to Placerville as well as the rest of the county.
All right, thank you.
And I was wondering, along the same lines, that Fire Safe Council, if maybe they shouldn't become involved in our, in our, you know, what we're doing? So that we, like, what, Karen, that's a really, you know, thing that we have to consider.
And it might be that those programs fall under the Fire Safe Council's jurisdiction.
And we wouldn't have to address it, you know.
Right. And, and, you know, that's fine, I just want someone to address it. Because it will, I mean, it's, it's in our best interest that this work gets done. Nobody wants to put liens on property, or the city won't see that money for 20 years or something.
Right.
Good point.
So, yeah.
I just want, before we move on, Mayor, if I could.
We're not moving on, we're going to the public.
Can I just mention quickly that they may wanna comment on this, that is, that we are looking at holding a public workshop.
Yes.
I believe I mentioned that in my report, that we have a fifth Tuesday in January, I believe it's the 29th, right? So we are looking at that as a potential date for a public workshop. I've talked to the fire district about participating. I intend to talk to Mr. Zalinski, that our new Fire Safe Council, have him invited. And so we'll be available to provide information to the public and talk more about this at that date, so.
All right. I would like to go ahead and open the item up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on this item, please come forward. Sue, thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you. Yes, it has been an exercise in patience. But Sue Rodman, and this is the ordinance I really want to make some comments about. This ordinance is badly needed to protect Placerville and Placerville residents from the kind of disaster that destroyed Paradise. I have some suggestions. These are based on vegetation management practices I've found to be effective on my property and from my experience in the Forest Service. The deadlines for vegetation removal, May 1st to May 10th has proved an effective deadline for weed eating on my property, depending on precipitation. The goal is to mow or weed eat when grasses have reached their maximum height and started to go to seed, but are still mostly green, which is when they tend to go dormant for summer and regrowth is minimal. I make sure my weed eating is done by Mother's Day and have had very little regrowth. April 1st is usually too early for most of Placerville. A lot of times it's still raining on April 1st. If weed eating or mowing is done too early, the vegetation grows back and abatement must be done multiple times. June 1st is too late for Placerville. By June, most grasses, weeds, and hazardous vegetation is drying out and moisture content is already low enough to become a fire hazard. The next comment is on stubble height. Stubble height residual after mowing or weed eating. I have found that keeping a residual stubble height of three to four inches has the advantage of retaining moisture in the soil and providing some cover, soil cover for shade and protection from the wind. This also encourages beneficial grasses and discourages noxious weeds. When I purchased my property, it was almost solid yellow star thistle in my little orchard area, and it had been weed-eated to ground, bare ground every year. After two or three years of pulling, mulching, and leaving three-to-four-inch stubble height, yellow star thistle is rare on my property. I experimented with a two-inch stubble height, and it resulted in many more noxious weeds and much lower soil moisture. Preserving soil moisture is really important to reduce fire behavior. In your section five, you guys were just discussing requirements one through four. This is an important section, and it deals with fire break widths and needs a rewrite, both to comply with CAL FIRE requirements and to be clear. Several references to a 100-foot fire break, both as a minimum and then as a maximum, need to be defined better. The depth for spreading chips or scrape material also needs to be addressed. If these materials are too deep, they also present a fire hazard. I was around for the Angora fire in Lake Tahoe, and what I saw was people, because of the restrictions from TERPA, had not been allowed to remove any needles, and so what happened was you had needles two feet deep on people's roofs and in their yards, and it went, and it was, it was a mess. And that's, a lot of the Angora fire actually was worse where it came to the houses. The houses caused a lot of the damage themselves in the Angora fire. So, anyway, you can't, you need to keep, Dennis is correct when he says the trees need to have some amount of mulch, some amount of leaves, grass and stuff around their roots. But if it gets too deep, but if you leave, you know, three, two inches, three inches, even four inches, it's not a problem. But when you start getting a foot of, of duff under your trees, you, you do have a problem. We had, for the star fire, we had the rust-resistant sugar pines that were actually identified for research in that fire area. And the ground, it went to a ground fire, and so all of our crews thought, "Ah, good, we're safe." But the, the depth of the duff around those trees was so deep that it burned, I mean, you had two feet of duff, and it burned around and killed those trees 'cause it cooked cambium. So there's a, a fine line there where you keep enough duff to keep your soil moisture and not too much so that you end up killing your trees anyway. Okay, requirement number five needs to be added for ordinary homeowners. You have one through four, but you need to add a number five. On parcels that are less than 100 foot in size, need to be identified, and then CAL FIRE requires 30 feet green and clean around dwellings and 100 feet or to the property line vegetation control to prevent ladder fuels from reaching tree canopy. CAL FIRE provides a really nice informative pamphlet showing appropriate vegetation management to allow landscaping that is also fire-safe. It shows adequate spacing for ornamental shoves and tree trimming that provides a break in the vegetation, both laterally and vertically, to lessen fire's ability to jump from plant to plant. For example, if you have an ornamental shrub that is seven feet tall, wild bushes would be an example, and the tree next to it has branches that begin at 10 feet from the ground, which is what our ordinance says, it only provides three feet of clearance. In flames. which is what our ordinance says, it only provides three feet of clearance and flames easily reach over three feet. So it needs to be tailored to say the clearance between the two needs to be at 10 feet. But if you have lateral spacing apart, then the vertical spacing doesn't need to be as high. But that needs to be addressed, and it's not. And one last comment. This ordinance will only be as effective as its enforcement. I hope the city is serious, that sufficient efforts will follow to improve the fire safety for all of us. Because without effective enforcement, it's just one more piece of paper to burn with the rest of Placerville.
Thank you, Sue. And if you would, I'm sure you're going to give those comments to the clerk so that Cleve can get them incorporated as appropriate. Good evening, Kirk. Would you like to address the council on this item?
I assume you were going to ask that next.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. I have several concerns. First of all, I'd suggest that I agree with everything that the city manager said, except when he said it was rough, rough, rough graph. I think he could increase that about seven times and come closer. This is so extraordinarily broad, extraordinarily vague. I haven't seen you guys do anything like this before. Example, let's just look at the colloquy between Mr. Thomas and Mr. Kuna when you talk about leaves. One gives a good reason why some leaf coverage is appropriate. Another one says, well, we're only talking about accumulation. How are you going to define accumulation? Every year, I spend $3,000 to $5,000 to clear our property, and I have crews come in and clear it to the ground. Some areas, I leave patches for meadows so that small animals have ground cover to hide from, from owls and the like. So this last year, I had someone ask me, now, do you want this down to the ground, or do you want, you know, an inch or two inches? How do you define that? What our colleague just said a moment ago about the ground conditions is true, but it's going to depend on the kind of foliage and vegetation you have. So one year, I had all the ground cleared, and then what do you know? There was an unseasonable rainstorm came in, I had to do all over. When you spend $3,000 to $5,000, it's a big deal. So those are just some of the considerations why you're going to have to have a lot of thought to this. I'll tell you a couple of things that I think are extraordinarily important for enforcement. Make sure you get the message out that I understand long ago. If you, a property owner, are negligent in any way for a fire, or your negligence caused the acceleration of a fire, you can be subject to liability for those damages. PG&E facing billions. People throughout the state have done, have had that happen. You know, you run risks if you fail to comply with a municipal or state ordinance. You run that risk of those liabilities. And unlike PG&E, you're not going to escape manslaughter charges. I mean, they may not be able to bring murder charges against a corporation, but they have against individuals. That's a very important enforcement mechanism. As far as vigeness, let's look at the specifics you've got. Number one, you identify what defensible space is. Secondly, you talk about clearing the limbs up to 10 feet. And then you talk about sending letters out on April, or it's February the 15th, and then you're going to have a cutoff date sometime in May 1st. Let me ask you, what sense does it make to operate on your calendar instead of the weather calendar? We don't control the weather. And what about that situation, just described, where we have an unseasonable rain that comes in later? There are a lot of other ways that would be much more logical to address that issue. I don't have enough time to list all the problems in it. Let me just suggest some other things you can do that are far more immediate and don't affect the issue of, right now, we're saved by the weather. So you don't have an immediate, you've got a lot of time. We need fire codes, building codes that specifically address fire. I put in an artificial, you know, synthetic deck instead of redwood, redwood and other parts. Take a section of that synthetic deck, put it in a fire, and see if you can put it out. One of the problems they had up in Paradise is those fires were highly combustible. We have areas in the country where they have building codes for hurricanes. We have building codes for earthquakes. We need building codes which you can start now. That's one. Also, what we discovered when PG&E has their outages, do you have a plan for what happens when the power goes out? Who's going to control signaling traffic? Because we didn't have anybody doing it then. Those are the kind of things you can be doing now. I applaud you for taking this effort. This is an absolute nightmare, not even getting around the civil liberties issues, which is that any city employee can be an inspector. The code enforcement officer can designate anybody, any city employee in the newsroom or anywhere else. And you can go onto someone's property at any hour, anytime, no warrant. And if you want to line it up against the state inspection law, I don't think it lines up exactly, but yours goes way beyond that. So when it comes to not going into a building that's determined to be habitable or a habitable dwelling, who makes that determination? Section 7 says, the city does. So there's all kinds of similarities issues related to, you know, failure to follow the Fourth Amendment. Those are the reasons why I think you need a lot of thought to this. And that workshop is a great idea because there's some other areas that could be explored that would enhance public safety tremendously.
Thank you, Kirk. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor Kuna and members of the council, Kathy Lishman.
Good evening, Kathy.
It's a very complex issue, and it's really important to have the facts. And I think that this is very, very rough. I have, I'm chair of a nonprofit called Friends of Seniors. We're in partnership with the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council to help create the 30 feet around homes for seniors who can't afford to do it themselves. They can't do the work themselves, and they can't afford to hire somebody. And we work with a landscape contractor who helps out. So I want you to be aware of that program. And I emailed this to, we work closely with Ernie Laurie, who's a member of the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council. And I emailed this to him, and he had a lot of suggestions that I won't go through tonight. I will get them to Cleve. But I think it can be shortened up a lot. I think that we need to develop something that's really pertinent to Placerville. And I also think that education is a big key. There are things that people can do that they're, they don't, they're not even thinking about that. The county has a program for low-income seniors for dead trees. And then also, up at Lake Tahoe, the Lake Tahoe Fire District is the one that goes around to the homes and does inspections and leaves little notes. So I think our fire district could be a key player in this also. And I know at Tahoe, one of the things was the pine needles, when they catch on fire, they just flew through the air. And so that was one of the problems they had there. Anyway, I will get my comments, actually, Ernie Laurie's comments, to you.
That's right. Appreciate it, Kathy. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment on this and bring it back to the council for direction of staff. I would just like to thank Cleve for taking this shot at this, however rough it may be. This is a lot of state verbiage, really, so as far as the legalities go, it should be pretty well tested, correct?
Yeah, a couple things I just want to mention. This is, again, this is based on an ordinance that the county is considering. And so there are certain things that will probably not apply to us because they have different considerations in terms of unimproved lands that we don't have as much to deal with. But I did want to mention also, a representative of the Fire Safe Council is part of the committee that is working with the county on putting this ordinance together. In fact, I believe the person, and my mind's going blank on his name, but he's the head of the Fire Safe Council for the county. So he's been part of that process also. Again, I understand fully, there are things that need to be corrected on this. This whole purpose was to get this discussion started and make sure that this was the direction the council wanted to move. There are some considerations that you will have to look at, and those were, some of those were brought up by Mr. Smith in determining, you know, what rights an inspector has to go on and look at properties. And it comes down to that issue of, you know, there's some privacies and civil liberties that we understand. There's also some safety issues and fire prevention that have to be recognized throughout the community, too. So it's finding that balance in there that we need to recognize and how we can accommodate and try to meet the needs of as many as possible, so.
Cleve, a couple of things, and I want to encourage any member of the public and my fellow council members to get your thoughts and recommendations to Cleve over the next, as soon as possible, really, because if we want to have a workshop on the 29th of January, I think that would be perfect because this is the time of year, given the unknowns of when spring starts and summer starts, people need to at least have plans or an opportunity to find resources and what have you. You know, we all know, we all know that scenario. Cleve, I'll, again, say thank you because I think there's two issues here. There's the, and it's tremendous learning from the Paradise disaster. I think short-term goal, utilizing something that we could put together for this season that would allow us to get out there, get our feet on the ground, make a start at this, address the problem properties. For 10 years, I have turned in properties every year that I've received complaints for, from other, from constituents and from neighbors. And I've, it's always been so frustrating. We always seem to start from square one. And it's like, and it's always the same folks that have issues. It's either not a priority, or they don't recognize the hazard, or they're an absentee landowner and don't appreciate the hazard that they're putting their neighbors to. So I'm hopeful that we're going to, we'll never see those days again with this. But we need to also think that if we're going to learn from Paradise, there's got to be a long-term project or a long-term plan that Placerville has to move forward with a whole lot of agencies. CAL Trans, for example, as Councilmember Taylor mentioned. The Car fire started because of a flat tire on a boat trailer on a highway. If no one's clearing the sides of the roads anymore, we have a big issue with CAL Trans. So we need them at the table. We need the Forest Service, we need CAL FIRE, County FIRE. We need to be our own good neighbors, making sure that our properties are safe. Something that I've observed since the Paradise fire is the places that they saved lives and the facilities that they used when they realized that they were way outgunned very early on, that there was no escaping that fire. And they were using parking lots, very successfully used parking lots with a handful of fire equipment to protect dozens and hundreds of people in a shop. So that makes me look at something like Lions Park now, all of a sudden. If we're doing our own proper maintenance out at Lions Park, we have two ball fields and a parking lot that if there's a firestorm coming at me, I'd rather take my chances out on a ball field than try and go down a narrow seeded ravine, whether I'm going north or south. So those are the kinds of things that if we're going to really learn from what happened in Paradise, we're going to have to look citywide, long-term, multi-year engagement with probably committees, et cetera, to develop the recognition that almost every citizen is going to have to be, play their part in being responsible for themselves. They've learned very early on, and one of the things that's come out of the Paradise fire is that those folks that had had some experience, if you will, whether they'd been in a fire, they had background, did much better because they didn't wait for somebody to tell them what to do. They didn't wait to try and use their cellphone and then found out that the entire cell system was down and had been destroyed early on, on and on and on. So we have an obligation to decide how far we want to take this and how much resource we want to put towards it. Certainly, getting an enforceable fire ordinance is an excellent first step. I have offered my neighborhood up. I've talked to a few of my neighbors. We have, which, two or three years ago, we have beautiful oak-covered large lots that are now huge fire insurance liabilities in their current state. Neighbors are losing insurance almost on a monthly basis right now. My policy has almost doubled. So those live oak trees and black oaks that I loved five years ago, because of, for whatever change, are now a massive liability. So I would be happy to look at, you know, a couple of things that have been identified for many years by CAL FIRE, and we have two risk zones. Fire coming into the north of town from the American River Canyon, and we have the fire coming south out of the Weber Creek Canyon. Anybody that's worked while land fires in here in this county knows that those are two Paradise-like scenarios that these guys fear. So again, I would throw my neighborhood up as a test group, and my neighbors seem to be willing to cooperate and see how this works because we have a whole variety of existing conditions, from folks that haven't cleaned their yard in five years to people that have absolutely spotless, down to the last leaf removed in compliance and everything in between. So I will be, I will be getting with Cleve to see what we can do to do that. Does the council feel that we have adequate time to advertise a workshop on the 30, or excuse me, the 29th? Utilizing that third Tuesday? Can we get it, can we get it done? Get it out there so that we can get a good attendance from our citizens? What's your thoughts?
Well, I think we can. Works for me.
You put up a sign in your restaurant.
I think if you, if you put it up on the front page of the newspaper.
And I was going to suggest that we do have some signs made. And I think we should have some signs made and like down on.
Our community chat sign?
Down on Placerville, like where my building is on Placerville Drive, and distribute them, you know, all over, not, not just rely on downtown Placerville. Get them out there so that people can see them. Maybe even take them up to the schools and have the kids tell their parents. I don't know, but I think we could send out some messages.
Cleve, what do you think? Yes?
I'm only worried about if we do all this, the location.
We're not going to have enough.
Well, we don't want to violate the fire code having an overloaded meeting.
Just so you know, the initial kind of thought we had in how we would do this would be have, like, booths or stations that people could come and visit to look at, say, have the Fire Prevention Council at one, have the Fire Department at one, have the city at one, and there may be more than that. Maybe the county would like to participate with us also. So it wouldn't be something you come and hear a presentation, but here is something you come and you can talk, you come for, you know, as long as you want to stay and talk to people in those different areas, and then you leave. So that may accommodate a little bit better the number of people that would come, but anyway, just a thought.
I think if we were going to do that, we would want to have some clear information to give them on our, on the policies that we're going to bring forward here.
And I also think that we need to, there's going to be people that, like, for instance, what Sue presented tonight, there's folks that have their ideas. And I'm not sure that, what you're saying, that kind of would, you know, that that would be conducive to people giving their ideas, or?
I think it could be better, actually, yeah.
You think it would be better?
Some people are much more likely to speak to you one-on-one than they are in front of a, now, Sue doesn't have a problem speaking to us up here, but some people are less likely to speak to a large crowd than they are to.
So we could have one, one part, be that for that, for submitting, you know, ideas?
If it was billed as an education process for land clearing as opposed to, here's what our policy is, and here's what we're doing, it depends on how it's, you know, put out there. The expectation, you just don't want to have unmet expectations when people show up. They're going to, they're thinking they're going to get something that's not that.
Yeah. And my intention would be for, from the fire district and from the Fire Safe Council, absolutely, that was what it would be with education. The other thought was, though, that perhaps we want to put, you know, some, maybe bullet point charts up of what this would do and allow people to comment. But we don't have to do that at that time, so.
If you do that, I would also invite CAL FIRE because they would still be responding into this district.
Sure.
Absolutely. You know, I also have to, Mr. Smith mentioned our building codes, and I, and maybe, Cleve, you learned this up in Paradise. I did hear when the, when they were interviewing on TV, and I think it was Jody Jones that talked about, and she said, somebody, they noticed one thing in particular, that the homes that burned were the old ones and were not, and that several of the newer ones that adhered to their. that several of the newer ones that, that adhered to their current codes survived. So there's got to be something said for that, too. And I know we can't go and rebuild people's homes, but, you know, find out why they, you know, were susceptible.
Cleve, is that, that sounds like a pretty ambitious but doable goal.
Well, we can all.
Are you comfortable withholding the workshop on the 29th? Does that work? Do you want to move forward with that?
And I'd be more than happy to come and help set up or distribute or whatever.
I, I think it's important, you know, just like you, you took a little bit of heat here for not having enough bruffs in your student. And I don't think we should be afraid of, of jumping into this with both feet and doing all we can to educate our community because I think they're hungry for it. I think we have the avenues to do it, and I think it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to help us prepare for this, even if it's not, if, even if it's not regarding enforcing the policy that we're considering right now, but just good, safe habits that we will be enforcing going forward.
That's correct.
Let people have a voice.
Yep. I think that's very well stated, Councilmember Thomas. All right. Is there no other comments on that? I think we'll move on to item 12.3, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a city engineer to execute a notice of completion on the Blair's Lane Bridge replacement project. Good evening, City Engineer Deves, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Acuna and councilmembers. It's very late, so I'm gonna make this very brief. The Blair's Lane Bridge replacement project is now complete in accordance with the construction contract requirements. In conformance with Civil Code Section 3093, staff is now ready to issue a notice of completion for the project and record said notice with the Office of the County Recorder. Subsequently, staff is also ready to release all remaining retention being held for both construction management with Unico Engineering and the construction contract with McGuire and Hester. Staff continues its efforts towards project closeout with the Highway Bridge Program with an anticipated initial draft final invoice by the end of this month. Once the project is closed out, any excess remaining local developer match funds will be returned to Silverado Homes. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and this concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Excellent, and very concise. Any questions for our city engineer? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this item? The chair recognizes Sue Rodman.
Sue Rodman, yes. Congratulations to getting this one done. It's been a long haul and looks great now. Big improvement, big improvement for our city.
All right, thank you. Any other, any other comments from the public on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll bring it back to the council for, for motion.
Move for adoption.
Second. It was moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Councilmember Taylor.
One and two.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, and congratulations on that project. It is huge improvement. I was just admiring it the other day as the storm was blowing in. 12.4, adopt a resolution approving an increase in traffic impact mitigation fees equivalent to a change in the cost indexes as effective from December 2016 through December 2018. And again, our city engineer will have the report.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed item before you this evening is to increase the traffic impact mitigation fees in accordance with Section 8-15-8 of the City Code. Section 8-15-8 of the code includes a provision for the TIM fee program to be adjusted on January 1st of each calendar year by a percentage equal to the inflation rate of construction costs for the prior year. This inflation rate is based upon the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. The most recent TIM fee inflationary adjustment was approved by city council on January 10, 2017, and accounted for 4.35 rate of inflation at that time. Since the last adjustment in 2017, the cumulative inflation increased to 6.22%. The proposed fees supporting that increase are summarized in the table in staff's report. Should council approve this item, the new fees would go into effect in 60 days. Any applications received after the close of business on March 8 of 2019 will be subject to the new TIM fees. Additionally, as you may recall, a TIM fee program update was approved as part of the 2016-2017 adopted CIP and budget adoption process with an initial budget of $135,978. Staff has prepared a draft request for proposals to commence with the study and will come back to council at a later date as that effort progresses. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the city engineer?
I do have one. On the minor commercial, I'm sure this was discussed, I don't know, but when I look at it, and you do that compared to El Dorado County, the fee is, what, 35% higher than El Dorado County? And if we're gonna want to, I, I don't know if this is gonna be a factor that's gonna be considered when somebody wants to build in our community, but to me, if we were, and I, I know we're not talking about adjusting these, changing them, I don't know if that's even an option tonight, but it just seems to me it is, if we're gonna be competitive in this market and somebody's looking to build a county here, 5,000 square foot building, it's a 15, you know, goes up from there, 15, $20,000 difference. So.
Good comments and questions. I do want to mention that, you know, the CIP project that we have moving forward to update the TIM fee program, we'll look at all of those items and we'll come back with some recommendations. So this, you know, this, I completely, staff, here's what you're saying, and we recognized that as well. But once we go through the actual process in compliance with the government code to overhaul our TIM fee program, then we will address that fee at that time.
I would suggest we at least not raise it to any more than it is, if we can single that one out, because it'll put it in the $9 range instead of the $8 range. And it's just a, I don't know, I'm looking at the attorney and he's giving me a funny.
Yeah, I hesitate because we're in the midst of a TIM fee study, and your TIM fees, you just don't arbitrarily set them.
Right.
They're based upon certain criteria. And as a result, this is, the old fee is based on a criteria. We've got the cost of construction index that we use. So I would, at this point, I think I would keep it the same, unless there's a basis for, and not just economic.
My feeling isn't good enough, huh?
Well, I respect that, but.
So the reality is, we may not have many applicants building businesses in that range, anyway?
If I may, Director Rivas reminded me that in the county, within their fee structure, residential actually subsidizes commercial.
Okay.
So something to consider.
The, the point I wanted to make, Councilmember Two, on that is that if, if you really did not want to raise that one, you probably should look at not raising any of them. Just not increase the, that would be an option you could consider.
All right. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions for staff at this point?
Well, along those lines, would that mess up Dave's budget calculations?
Thanks for, good question, Councilmember. My understanding is the forecast that we included in your budget did not include this increase, so it would not affect negatively on our budget.
Thank you, Kara. I have a question, and really it is, when do you anticipate bringing the TIM fee study to the council?
We have a draft RFP that staff is still reviewing internally, and we'll be looking to release it within the next month or so, kind of catching up on some workload items. And we can provide an update to council and the city manager in the next couple of weeks to give a more affirmed-up schedule. I'm hesitant to start putting out dates out there because I want to check with Melissa who's working on it.
Okay. Let me ask city manager Morris, when is the, we are required by law to review all of our impact fees, and where are we in the time schedule for the TIM fee?
They're due. That's to be done every five years, I believe, is what the requirement is, so.
Correct. And also, another reminder from Director Rivas, he sure is handy to sit next to you. In 2008, we actually adopted what was considered interim fees. So we've been using those interim fees now for 11 years. And so we do have to go through the program. It's been on our radar for a while, and hence why we brought forth the CIP project when we did. So it just takes a little bit of time. It's a pretty inordinate task.
I appreciate that. That's why I asked, you know, I asked Cleve that question because it's really a bigger issue than, you know, the charge at the engineering department, but it's critical that we're in compliance with that. The county is an example of what happens when they aren't. Various lawsuits and bad things happen. So I appreciate the efforts. I will ask you if there's any member of the public that has any questions or comments on this particular item, 12.4.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. From the discussion I heard there, I'm thinking, well, maybe you're leaning toward not raising them, but you're already two years behind in, in raising them. So to me, the prudent thing to do is to go ahead and approve these fees and then do the study, which you don't know how long it will take. You know, the fact that the city waived totally the TIM fees for the Boys and Girls Club makes me wonder where the money is gonna come from that should have come from that. They could have been partially raised, partially waived, but they were totally waived. And there was a big audience here, and it's a lot of pressure put on the council. And when a motion is made to waive the TIM fees, it seems like the right thing to do, but in the end, it probably wasn't. And the county, because I was involved with the group that put the Measure Y on the ballot, that new development needs to pay for the impacts it, it causes in roads. There was too much opposition to it if it applied to commercial. And so it is correct that commercial in the county is lower than it should be.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that, appreciate your comments and your observations. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I will bring it back to the council for potential action. What is the, what are the wishes of the council? I'm trying to go as fast as I can. We still have to get through lead pipe and community pride. I think the point is, is I have been on this council long enough to, to, to have experienced something I believe Kathy's kind of alluding to, is we get so far behind on these adjustments that they're massive, and you will fill this room up with a whole bunch of unhappy people. And it's, and rightfully so, because we were remiss in staying current, which is the inflation index. And there's, sometimes the odd question, I know you all realize it, but the, you know, the, there's always that relation to the Bay Area's cost of, and why are we using a price index from such as, it's just because that's the way the world works. So I would entertain a motion to consider.
One quick question. If we went ahead and approved this, is it fair to say that we would have a chance to review TIM fees in general after the study?
Well, we're going to review the, you are gonna know so much about TIM fees.
I, I, I agree with you on that. And I know that I, you want to try and maintain our competitiveness and try and not put any more pressure on our, on people who wish to invest in our community. And at the same time, we still have to pay for staff and pay for our future investments in this community. And so often, we've been accused of not investing and not putting money aside for wastewater treatments, for new pools, and for things like this. And this, I think, falls right in line with those things. So, you know, while I, I don't like it, I think it's, it's an important thing to do.
Is that a right?
I, I will move that we adopt this.
I'll, I'll second that and just add a comment. Same thing, I mean, we had Department of Consumer Affairs where we have all these boards, licensing boards, and they'd go six, eight, 10 years without raising a fee on the licensing side, and then come back and ask for a 380% increase, because, you know, they just hadn't been raised. And so whoever's the unlucky person at the time ends up getting hit with that as opposed to having a sort of a gradual. So I want to thank former Mayor Lishman as well for her words earlier today. I think, as much as I don't want to bring anything forward that might make us uncompetitive, we do have to kind of keep up with the, the fees here to pay for everything as well as not bring forward several years down the line, a huge increase because we haven't done it now.
What I remember from the past is that, that we didn't, well, and this, I did not vote, I voted in opposition, but the consensus was, we're going to kill any kind of, you know, bringing people in, especially with housing and stuff. And they kept the fees way too low. And I objected to it, but it's still, I, because for that very reason, I, you know. Anyway, that's kind of what happened. And it was a lot cheaper to build in the city of Placerville than the county of El Dorado, I'll put it that way.
Pretty sort of, kind of, sort of is.
A long time ago.
Yeah, okay. And I want to, just to, Kara, your comment earlier about that we are gonna get an excellent overview when we just have the TIM fee study that is right up Mr. Orange. There's just numbers galore and all kinds of justifications and explanations and,
his eyes are glowing.
And, and I mean, I didn't mean to, you know, make light of that. It is excellent that, it's good that we're gonna be going through this with new council members because it is, it applies to a lot of other things that we do, so it's an excellent learning tool. And, and it does very much affect our ability to, you know, attract projects. So I have a motion and a second. I will ask for a roll call vote, just because I like the clerk.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You're doing a fine job this evening. We are finally on to item 12.5. And at this point, all the hours that the dangerous piece of lead pipe has sat over there by Rick, we may have to have a mitigation done over there. We are being asked to acknowledge and file the lead and copper report update from, for the community from Mr. Rick Farrar.
Good evening, Mayor Acuna and councilmembers. The city operates a public water system that is required to provide information to their customers and consumers about the quality of their drinking water. One of the drinking water requirements includes a 1991 EPA regulation to control lead and copper in the water. This regulation is known as the Lead and Copper Rule. The Lead and Copper Rule is enforced by California's Division of Drinking Water. The city has been testing for lead and copper since 1992 and is on a three-year monitoring plan. The plan is approved by the Division of Drinking Water and requires participation by the public. Lead and copper in the drinking water is primarily from the materials and components associated with water service lines and home plumbing. The sample plan requires the city to perform 25 samples from around the city every three years. The water sampling is performed on private residents, not on the city's water system. The city provides residents in the sampling plan with a water sampling kit that includes instructions, a sampling bottle, and is, and if needed, support from the city staff. It is estimated that the city has approximately 425 water services with the potential to have a lead component, which is known as a gooseneck. A gooseneck was used between the water main and the water meter on the service line. The gooseneck allowed the adjustments between the depth of the water service line and the location of a water meter. The city of Placerville provides lead and copper information to its water systems annual report, the Consumer Confidence Report. These reports are available on the city's website under the Public Works section. Based on over 25 years of lead and copper sampling, the city of Placerville is below the action levels and does not pose any health risks. I have an example up here of a lead gooseneck, if anyone wants to see it. That includes staff's report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions this time.
Thank you very much, Rick. Appreciate your patience this evening as we worked our way through this. Does anyone on the council have a question for Rick? And I think we've all seen the dangerous gooseneck over there. Thank you for holding it up. That is, seriously, you know, that is a point of concern with our water quality. Nothing? Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council. This is just a, an acknowledge and file. So thank you very much for all your efforts on this and continuing to remove those. I know whenever we do a road project, we look for them, get them out of there. So. So, thank you. The number four twenty-five, and going down. All right, moving on to item twelve point seven, adopt a resolution approving changes to the roles and responsibilities of the Community Pride Committee Volunteers. Mr. Lishman.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this item for you this evening is to update the existing Resolution Number seven seven, seven two, to improve upon the efforts made by Community Pride Volunteers. Community Pride was established as an official city committee in nineteen ninety. Since then, this group of dedicated volunteer, volunteers, some may be in the audience tonight, has planted and nurtured gardens throughout the city, along Broadway, Main Street, the Highway fifty corridor, the Trail Creek, and Goldbug Park. Currently, there are eleven adopted gardens, and the committee has other spots available for adoption. Committee volunteers have also created three murals located within town. In an attempt to reduce time commitments, allowing more energy to be placed on beautification projects, the committee is recommending existing board appointments be removed from the resolution. The intent is not to disband Community Pride, but to reallocate time and effort spent attending monthly meetings into time spent working in the gardens. Under the revised resolution, the following conditions and expectations will be established. Organization, under, under the direction of the Director of Community Services or his or her appointee, volunteers will assist staff with the following: creation of, creation of new landscape and art projects throughout the city, maintenance of existing landscape and public art, recruitment of volunteers, fundraising to support Community Pride efforts, and promotion of existing gardens and public art. Procedures, all new Community Pride projects shall, shall be subject to the review and approval by the city. Upon submittal, the city shall act to approve, deny, or revise the recommended projects and/or programs which are subject to finding of consistency with all other city-approved plans and standards. Which leads us into, to the next subject of standards. All gardens, artwork, adopt a spots, or other projects and programs shall be subject to minimum standards which shall be established with all projects. Said standards shall be incorporated with the individual project or program description as approved by the city. And finally, funding. Funding for Community Pride projects and operations may be derived from fundraising efforts by Community Pride volunteers. The city may, at the sole discretion of the city council, contribute funds to Community Pride. Any costs associated with the proposed changes to the committee are negligible. Tonight, staff is requesting that city council adopt a resolution approving changes to the roles and responsibilities of Community Pride volunteers. That concludes the report, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, madam. Appreciate it. Are there any council questions at this time? I will open this item up for public comment, invite the founder of Community Pride, or one of the founding members.
Yes, twenty-eight years ago.
I wasn't gonna say that.
Kathy Lishman, Chair of Community Pride, at least for now. As you can see, Community Pride members don't really come to council meetings, and they're people who roll up their sleeves and get out to work, and that's really what they love to do. And so last April, we looked, looked at the resolution and decided that it needed to be updated, and one of the things was requiring Community Pride members to file a Form seven hundred, which Susan Zito had said years later that we didn't have to. Anyway, there were things that we wanted to update on it, and then we started this discussion about, we don't need to have monthly meetings. People need to work in their garden, and we can give each other reports and maybe have a quarterly newsletter or something, and, and meet every year when it's time to do, to do the budget. And so, over time, we discussed this and, and came to the conclusion. So I, I just wanted you to know tonight that the Community Pride members, this isn't something that's being done to us, it's something that we are recommending. And also, Josette Johnson made a really cute handout, she and I worked on this the last couple of days, to show you some of the gardens that Community Pride is working on. And you don't need to hand them out now, but I'll give them to Regina.
Well, I was gonna ask you a question, because I've been, I've, been an admirer and a supporter of Community Pride for a long time. I remember when you had the garden tour fundraisers, those were fun. How many active members do you have right now, Kathy?
Well, what, what we started a couple of years ago, so there were five board members. Years ago, we had ten, and then we, the city cut it down to five. And we have five board members, and then what we started doing was having workdays, work parties, where we had a bunch of volunteers. We probably have fifteen volunteers total.
Okay.
Where they don't come to meetings, they just show up at Goldbug Park or at the Ivy House planting daffodils, or we just arrange times when we need help. And two projects that we're working on now and have been for a long time, one is the Monument Garden, to finish the landscaping in that, and Carrie Fryer is working on a plan for that. And then the other one is the Ora Cart Garden, which we were working with Caltrans, well, we were working with Goldbug Park, but Caltrans didn't like the mine that was suggested to be there. So Marcia Scott and Carrie are working on a plan for that. And it seems like, I've recently applied for two grants for the Monument Garden and have a couple of other ideas, too. So I can work on projects like that. Josette can work on poppy seeds all along the trail this year, and Josette Johnson maintains the gardens at Old City Hall, and also at the one coming into town by Round Table, the monument there. And so different people have different things that they're working on, and, and so, like I said, when we have workdays. And then Steve Yule, the last two years, when you've done, what is it, the community, what's it called?
Community Cleanup Day? The work.
Well, it's, it's more the community's Day of Service.
There you go.
He, he actually has helped us as part of that program to get some mulch, some bark into some of the gardens. And there are gardens that have been abandoned because they were too difficult, like across from Mosquito Outfitter, the homeless were too much in that area. And then the landscaping strip down at the street, between the parking lot and the street, was maintained by the shopping center across the street, and then I think there must have been a contract that that only had to be that way for a certain period of time, so it's become abandoned. And so last year, Steve had work done in that area to clean that up. And so, we just do with what we have, and you're right, we did have a garden tour, it made like six thousand dollars a year, but the liability of it became pretty great, but it was wonderful.
We could go back to flipping hamburgers.
Yeah, that's right. Patty and Carl and I, we used to sell hamburgers downtown on Main Street for the antique fair, but then they had these rules that you had to have a commercial kitchen to do things, so. Anyway, we, and for the Monument Garden, the city contributed money, for the monument, we raised fourteen thousand dollars for that. We got a grant from the, the Veterans Commission for the SEALs at the end, and then we also, five of the six veterans groups, each donated two thousand dollars. Anyway, so we do what we can, and we are not gonna go away, we are just going to reorganize and, and hopefully continue to get a lot done, and, and hopefully have time to find more volunteers. Any other questions?
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate you spending the time to outline for everybody all of the different things that I think they all take for granted now, because it's been, you've been an effort in the community for many, many, many years.
So our first adopt a spot was the Ivy House Garden, and Carol Patton planted that. I have a picture of those little plants. And she planted that cork oak tree that's down there, too, that's so messy, but, and then the second one was the Bell Tower. Oh, City Hall and the Bell Tower was full of junipers. And so with the Bell Tower, at first, we just took the junipers out, and the plants that were planted there had to be watered by hand, and eventually water came in. So, and we knew that the Ivy House Garden, the plan was to connect up Cedar Ravine with Clay Street. So we could have waited and not done anything there, but we just always decided we need to do what we can, and our motto is to improve the grace and charm of Placerville, and we hope it has helped.
You certainly have.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any, any member of the public want to comment on this? Bring it back to the council for action. We need to adopt a resolution to make these changes to the Community, Community Pride organization.
I'd like to first express my appreciation for everything that you guys do for our community. It does make a difference, and when you drive around and you see the, the gardens that you guys have put in and maintained over the years, and when they do get, get full of weeds and, and, but that never happens, right? But when they do, it's noticed, and you guys come in behind and you guys, you guys get it going. So it, it does make a difference, and it, so I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll just go ahead and move to, unless anybody else wants to comment.
No, I was just gonna.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna second it.
So I have a motion by councilmember Thomas and a second by councilmember Borelli. Are there other councilmember comments? I'll just go ahead and say thank you again. You really have, and it wasn't always easy, there was a lot of, you had to do a lot of dragging of feet, kicking and screaming. You took some folks out and proved that you could have flowers on Main Street, and thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And again, thank you, Kathy, for all your years of dedication to this city. All right, we are moving on to item number thirteen. And given the hour of the, and length of the meeting, are there any items of any importance on any of these at this time? I don't think we.
Seacog gave a very nice goodbye to former member Clarice, and it was, it was a very nice little plaque and ceremony, so.
Well, he deserves it. He was a very dedicated member, and we look forward to your continuing on at Seacog in his place. All right, moving on to item fourteen, request for future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Not hearing any. Moving on to item fifteen, city manager and staff reports, Mr. Morris?
None tonight.
Thank you, sir. We have a number of upcoming items for our next meeting on January twenty-second, and given the hour, I won't go through all of these. And we do look there, says there's truck purchase, though. Purchasing trucks is important, so. And so is fixing streets. So we are gonna have some good stuff in our second meeting of the year, January twenty-second. I'll go ahead and wish everybody a happy new year, and adjourn us to that next meeting, closed session at five thirty, regular session at six. Thank you very much, and good evening.